Welcome, everybody. Tonight is, what is tonight? Tuesday, October 29th. I've lost track already. It's been one of those weeks. So tonight is our first workshop on the proposed 2025 budget. We will start off with a quick roll call. Councilmember Van Orman?
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cargill?
Present.
Councilmember Spencer?
Present.
Councilmember Dunn?
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Present.
Okay, we are all President accounted for. So we will move next to agenda approval.
Mayor will make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Wait a second.
Second.
There was a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All in favor of approving the agenda as printed, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. We have an agenda. So we fast forward now, we are up to citizen comments. So if you are in chambers and would like to make a comment about the proposed 2025 budget, we have our normal yellow half sheets by the door there. Fill one out and get it over to, Kelsey, is she in her office?
Yeah. I'm Kelsey, Kyle.
You look so different.
Get that over to Kyle. If there's anybody online who would like to make a citizen comment at this time about the proposed 2025 budget, please send a note to our meeting host in chat and we will get you tuned up here. If you don't have one now, we do have another citizen comment period at the end of the meeting before we adjourn. So is there anybody online? Nope. Okay. And it doesn't look like we have anybody here in chambers. So we will move on to workshop discussions, 2025 proposed budget. We're going to have Mark and Kyle kind of kick it off and then we'll get deeper into our details here.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Mayor. So in front of you tonight, we do have some inserts that we'll want to start with swapping out. So pages 27 through 31 in your budget binder, I'd like you to take out and rip up and throw away. In front of you, you have replacements that reflect two corrected cells from our Excel spreadsheet that kind of went haywire on us. And so these are some summary sheets and so there wasn't any changes to the line item or department detail or totals. So this is purely, and we'll go through these together as well right now. But page 27 outlines our ordinance adopting the 2025 budget. And in section one, I would just like to train our eyes halfway through that first paragraph. The final budget for $35,460,642 attached here too. That is our total appropriations proposed for 2025. And that does, you'll see if you, if you looked at the, at the ones that we included in the original, that is a little bit of a change. So we did need to start fresh with that information. And so if we could transfer over to page 29, this is really our main sum, our fund summary sheet from which we adopt the budget because we adopt at the fund level. So in the first column, you'll see all of our funds on the far left. And then that second column is our estimated beginning balance. And if you go all the way to the bottom there, estimated beginning balance total for all funds, $19.3 million. And our estimated revenues for 2025 are $25.8 million. And obviously we had to get into expenditures and estimated fund balance. There is some important information to glean from this and we'll get into it a little bit as we get further into the summary detail of expenditures. But you can see we start, we start 2025 with 19.3, we end 2025 with 9.7. So we can see there's a deficit there and we'll get into that here in a little bit. But our, again, our expenditures there reflect what we see in the ordinance of 35.46 million dollars. And so let's, let's go to page, we'll skip over the revenues, we'll come back to that for now. I do want to fast forward to page 31. And this gives a little bit more detail on our expenditures, our proposed expenditures for 2025. And so in our top line there, we have general fund. The next column over, we have 22 actual, 23 actual, we have 2024 adopted. And then we have 2025 proposed. And so there's some key bits of information we'll get into a little bit later during the budget season. But it's important to call them out now as we start work on the general fund to understand really where we are at. So we have, we have an adopted general fund expense budget in 2024 of $14.2 million. And so you see that cell all the way at the bottom of the 2024 adopted. Does everybody see where I'm at right there? And then we have a 2025 proposed of 16.47 million. And so that's a jump. And there is a, really a singular reason for that. And because in the 2025 budget, we have a proposed transfer of $2.4 million from the general fund into the library capital improvements fund for construction of the proposed library. And so as you, as you travel down, you can see, okay, so we have in all other funds, 2025 proposed. If you go about a third of the way down, 310 Capital Projects Fund, that is our REIT fund. And if we go all the way to the right there in the 2025 proposed, we have proposed expenses in 2025 for REIT one of $2.96 million. Does everybody see that as well? 1.5 million of that is a transfer also to the library capital fund for the construction of the library building. So if we then travel about six cells down, we'll run into Fund 330, Library Capital Fund. And if we go all the way to the right, we have that amount that was proposed for this project included in the 2025 budget. And so with that 5.7 million that you see there, in addition to the 1.5 million, the, the transfer from REIT and the 2.4 million from general fund, we have close to $10 million allocated for this project, even though we are only proposing to spend 5.7 million. So let's travel all the way down to 2025 proposed grand total for all funds. If we peel away any source of expense for the library capital building or for the library capital improvements, our, our grand total for expense for all funds goes from 35.46 million dollars down to 25.81 million. If we-
25.1?
25.81. So you can see we're, we're, we're right where we need to be. And I, I would understand if I'm reading this and I have a relatively shallow understanding of the budget, I'm saying, what are we doing proposing $35 million for a budget when last year we were at 24.2? So there are, there are artificial inflations through this budget that make this seem a lot larger than it is because of how we account for each separate fund and each dollar spent. And so with that, I would like to focus on the next insert that we have. And so these are our public works program inventory. And these were not pulled when we pulled together the initial budget. Obviously, it is a new department. It was included about halfway through our transition in our training with priority based budgeting. And so when we pulled the all program inventory sheet, these were not included. And so these we will include in the very, very back of the appendix on the backside of our existing priority based budgeting program inventory sheets. And as we go through our, each department and our line item detail, we are going to look for opportunities to pause and kind of flip back and forth between our program inventory and what we're seeing on our line item budget to see how those two interact. And the plan for 2025 into 2026 is to include these programs on the front end of each apartment section. So we see those first and then we can get into some of that line item detail second. And so for our transition from 2024 into 2025, we will reference them in the appendix. The plan for 2025 into 2026 is to lead with them and have the line item on the backend for that additional detail. And so before we go back to the salary schedule, I'll kick it over to Mark for any final thoughts on party based budgeting before we get into review.
Question?
Yes.
So what we have here, you say we're going to have at the end here, is that after page 168? Is that what you're proposing?
It is after page 277.
277.
So the very, very, it'll be, those will be the last sheets in your budget.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Are you talking about this little group here?
Correct, yes. At the very end, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Kyle. So that report is designed to be alphabetical, right? But at this stage of the game, it really doesn't matter. So just put them in, in the back because this, this part of the appendix will be somewhat living as we go through the budget process. It'll be finalized as we finalize and adopt the budget. And as Kyle mentioned, in this year, as we transition from a purely line item focused budgeting process to our priority based budgeting, our priority based focused budgeting process, we are going to walk you through that transition. And think of it as you have, and we've used the imagery analogy and we'll continue with that because I think it's a good one. You've got a picture that's somewhat out of focus. And as we go through this process, looking at these two side by side, it'll become more focused. And then next year and beyond, th- this will be our primary tool to communicate with you the levels of investment for each of these programs, which translates into service delivery. And then what the return on that investment is calculated to be in some kind of result. And so as Kyle walks through, we fully anticipate questions, not only in the line items that we, we will be reviewing, but also how they align back and tie back to the programs that are aligned with our strategic plan. And all of the department heads are ready to have those conversations and use any of these programs as examples to help cement the concept as we're having this discussion. So don't hesitate to ask questions in that context. We'll be happy to provide those answers and probably spend a little bit extra time just pointing out the, the way that these two interplay as we go through. And so that's really, I think, all that needs to be said. Before we kick it over and start reviewing, are there any questions about that before we head into the discussion?
Just a quick comment. Directors are online. I wasn't sure how far we'd get and I felt bad having all the directors come and sit through. So they're all online, ready to ask questions when we get to their sections. So you can't see them up there, but I can.
Okay. So with that said, I, so we are all familiar with the strategic plan. We can review the org chart briefly if you would like. But with that, I will start down the table of contents here real quick. And then once we get into the general fund, we'll have mayor drive the bus. So. All right. So table of contents, page six. So we have the mayor's message on page four, elected officials and strategic plan on page six, boards, commissions, org chart on page 22, budget ordinance through budget summary by revenue and expense through page 31. Are there any questions from anywhere between page four and page 31 before we dive into the salary schedule? And this is all really review that we include every year in our budget as well. So.
Right, Councilmember Kennedy?
Yeah, assumption is we're going to have several of these meetings. So we may not have questions now.
Right.
But it will raise questions for later on.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Van Orman?
When do we perceive putting in a youth commission?
That is a great question. So we have batted that back and forth. We have not really gotten any traction in the last three years. So I don't personally have an update, but we can certainly huddle together as, as an executive team and come up with some sort of timetable.
Yeah, well, so Jandy's, I'm sorry, it's got a weird message on my screen. Jandy's volunteer group has sort of served as the de facto youth commission. And so the question is, are we going to kind of merge those two things together or have two separate things? So yeah, definitely needs some further discussion. We just, it kind of disbanded during COVID and then we've had trouble kind of just kicking it back off since then. And don't forget to get your mics close, everybody. Yeah, go ahead.
I observed that the youth commission is actually a function of the initiative and the leadership of the youth in the community, that we as council members have set the table, so to speak, to create an opportunity and that we can't force that opportunity. I mean, we can work as I'd say we can in our spheres of influence to try and identify and encourage kids who are, I'm going to say, part of this, that want to be more part of it, that demonstrate leadership attributes. But you can't force this into being.
Well, and we, and we, we've taken up some of that slack as well by putting, we're, we're putting more and more like ex officio adjunct members of our other commissions, Parks and Arts has one, Community Engagement. So we're trying to get, we, we are able to get onesie twosie people involved in those different aspects of our different, different commissions at this point.
Just to follow up and not to get too far down into the weeds, we've had some productive conversations with Jesse Hart over at Ridgeline High School. And so we would be fairly confident in saying in sometime in the first quarter of 2025, bringing a proposal back to the council, not necessarily reconstituting a youth commission as it was previously constituted, but a proposal to bring more youth into boards and commissions that currently exist.
All right. Kyle, back to you.
With that, if we do not have any other questions, let's fast forward to page 32, the 2025 proposed salary schedule. So. I'm going to catch up to, so. Okay, so this outlines our salary ranges for all of our city employees, both full time, part time, as well as our kind of last group of seasonals. And so the, the city relied really heavily on seasonals for a long time. And we have been attempting to phase that out in lieu of part time and full time work. And so we are on the home stretch of that. We will have a handful of seasonals tend to the golf course during peak season. But outside of that, for parks maintenance, that was usually our, our biggest source of seasonal work. The plan is to phase that out entirely in 2025. So with that, we have five proposed new positions across all departments for 2025. We will get into those in more detail during each department review. But for now, I did want to highlight at the very bottom of page 32, we have our annual minimum wage increase from $16.28 an hour to $16.66 an hour. We have a cost of living adjustment as provided by CPI. The CPIW published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics from July 23 to July 24, that amount was 3.4%. And so that is what we have included in the 2025 proposed budget for salary increases. And in addition to that, employees are eligible for a 2% step increase upon satisfactory performance review. And we did a 2024 salary schedule review statewide. And we found we are one of the only entities that only have a seven step salary range. And so we found that most have a 10 step. And so we haven't adjusted any of the salaries on the front end. We have just added steps eight, nine, and 10 on the backend. So with that, are there any questions on page 32?
I think we had Councilmember Dunn first, then Councilmember Kennedy.
To rephrase the 10 step, 2% per step?
Yeah.
We're just adding two, three additional.
Correct. Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Under employee count, we have 90 and then 14. I think it was about 2022, I believe. Didn't we take some, several of our part timers and make them full time because of our growth?
Yeah.
Are we anticipating as we continue to grow to go less maybe part time, switching them to full time?
That's exactly what Kyle was talking about right before this, about switching, getting away from seasonal part time to more full time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz?
It's not a question, but it's just something that I noticed when I was looking at all the salaries all down the line. And I know that we have a contract with the police department, with the guild for the next three years. But I was noticing, it seems comparative to some of the different positions on here. I feel like we probably should be paying our police officers more for the work that they do and the, being in the line of duty and everything. And so that's something that I think we should be thinking about in the future. I'm not, I don't want to devalue anybody else's position and the work that they do and the expertise it takes to do that. But I think that the people that are out there every day, who might not come home at the end of the day, I, I think we ought to be thinking about how we can retain them and if our pay is commensurate with that.
Well, speaking of that, we, believe it or not, negotiations open up this year for the next contract already. Good timing. Yep. Councilmember Ball?
On these, the 2% step increase, just clarify for me. So that's 2% per year, correct?
Per year until you theoretically can top out at like a step seven, which is what we had, or a step 10. And so then employees at their top step would earn an additional floating holiday, but not earn a 2% step. Now with some of the justification behind increasing it from seven to 10 as well to retain our long-term employees.
Okay, but they can't go, they can't have 10 raises in one year is what I'm saying.
That is correct. These are annual.
Annual. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I, I'm sure we take into consideration as we get to the point where the raises are there, we start giving additional comp time or something like that for key employees and stuff. How do, how are we setting up so somebody else will pick up that slack? When they're gone?
Oh, like they're taking their earned time off?
So yeah, we have a, we, so we have a, we have a varied kind of array of paid time off. So we have sick, we have floating holiday, we have vacation. So vacation, we do escalate with tenure. And so you'll have roughly eight hours a month for new employees. That'll increase to 10 hours a month after five years to 12, all the way up to, I believe, is 16 is our top for our longest tenured employees after about 20 years, I think.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pro Tim?
One quick question. I'm not sure if, if you want to answer this, Kyle, or maybe Mark does. And I ask it every year when we go through this process, are there any benefits that we're not offering that we should be offering?
I, so I'll, I'll start. I, I would argue that our base benefits package is, I, I'm biased, is almost unrivaled. I, I think you could ask all of our 90 employees and potentially get 90 different answers. But the way we have structured our benefits is we have a high deductible offering. Obviously, that's not ideal. But we have a bridge that you'll get into that covers you. So you'll, you, we have a VIBA that is a $3,300 contribution that gets you up, that pays for your deductible. And then we have a bridge that gets you to your $10,000 out of pocket maximum if you need it. And that is Fund 530. We'll get into that a little bit later in the review. But we have all of these different safety nets that when they're pieced apart, cost a lot less than full Cadillac, Kaiser 200, or all of these other Cadillac options. And so the way we have structured it, I think, is, is great.
So to add a little bit of context, there, there are likely, if you go out and do some research, probably find some benefits that others are offering than that we're not. However, when you look at it from a total compensation perspective, based on what Kyle just went over, we have a very competitive package. And when you compare us to our neighbors and our competitors, when it comes to like sized cities in the region and on this side of the state, we offer one of the more competitive packages. So I'm sure that you can find some benefits that others offers that, that, that we don't on, on, on an individual basis. But when you look at the whole, we offer a, a very competitive benefits package.
Will you remind me, do we offer life insurance?
So I'm going to let.
Yes. Yep. So, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the one thing that, that's run across my mind off and on over the years is tuition reimbursement. We have not really discussed that. And I honestly don't know what the comparables are for that, though we are, we do have a lot of money in the budget for every department for training for specific to the job function. So not necessarily a degree program or something. But if, you know, one of the supervisors, somebody comes, comes for it. Obviously, we have all the plethora of, you know, alphabet soup organizations that we belong to where we get, we do get some training for, for free and, and less. But if there are other programs that's amazing interesting, we, we kind of look at that on a case by case basis.
Kyle, for the high deductible plan to the employee, they have access to an HSA?
So they have, I, I am not versed in all of the ins and outs of it, but yes, they do. And so the particulars, I, I will need to kind of get a kind of a one sheet and distribute that, but.
What about dependent care?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle on salary schedule?
All right. So with that, let's transfer over to page 33. We will see this in your packet next Monday. This will be a first read for our annual consideration of a property tax increase. The mayor's proposed a 0% increase. And so that is what we have included in the proposed budget. And so with that, you know, we touched a little bit when we were reviewing revenue sources. We do have a banked capacity of property tax that we are electing not to collect on the order of about 340,000. And so that is available basically at council's discretion. And so you guys can pass an ordinance to recoup all of that cost. And we can't obviously recoup prior years, but you can recoup all of that cost with a simple ordinance. And I believe for this year would be an ordinance approving an 11.2% property tax increase. And so that option is there, but due to, you know, our, the health of the city, certainly in recent years, and this has been, this has been something that, you know, throughout the city's existence, when we've seen an opportunity to take a zero, we've done it. And so now, it hasn't just been in the last couple of years. This has been kind of throughout the history of the city. And so again, the proposal is a 0% property tax increase. And so if there's any questions on that, we will dive into that a little bit further in November. But with that, we, we can move on. And so we just have a visual on proposed operating revenues and expenses on pages 35 and 36. These are very high level. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, real quick, can you remind us if you know what these percentages were last year? I'm just curious to see if, I, I have a feeling sales tax is taking up more and more, which is my perspective, a good thing. But I just wanted to double check. Do you know off the top of your head what sales tax and property tax percentages were last year?
I can pull it. If you give me about 30 seconds, I think I can track it down. Or mayor might be able to as well.
I should have brought mine.
I usually try to, I remember what page it was on last year.
Should be similar, maybe right around page 35, but it might. I'll have it here in a sec.
Yes, here we go. Pretty pages. All right. So sales tax was 46, same. Intergovernment six, property tax 21, licenses, permits 11. I'm sure I'm looking at the right year. My TBD sales tax obviously was, okay, 5%, 7, 3, and 1. Numbers are different, so we're pretty much.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah, we're the same. That's good question. I hadn't looked at it that way. Well, the next page is expenditures are, are a little bit different. If you want me to bring those off to you real quick. Yeah, go ahead.
TBD you said was what?
That's the transportation benefit district, but 5%.
Wait, oh.
Because, well, because we had planned that, that, remember this is the proposed budget.
Oh, oh, oh.
We planned it to start earlier.
Okay.
So last, so on expenditures proposed last year for law enforcement was 33, it's now 31. Parks operations and maintenance was 22, it's now 17. Finance, admin, and legal was 12, is 9. Planning, engineering, building services was 15, now it's 11. Streets was 9, now 7. Library was 5, now 4. Executive was 4, down to 3. I don't know what the rule, legislative 1%, that was the same. And then we have, we, what we didn't have in last year's was the transfers outs to, how, transfers out to other funds, which is 17%. With 25 proposed. Hopefully that helps. I'll keep this handy in case we need it.
Question?
Yes.
Oh, I missed it. What'd you say library was last year?
5%.
Thank you. Thank you.
That gets you where you want to be? Any other questions? Okay. Alright, any other questions on our charts? Revenue or expenditures?
Alright, so that'll get us into our budget guide. And so I, um, at the risk of losing everybody, I'm not gonna read this.
Thank you.
Uh, but I, we will field any questions or discussion on any of the content in here, if anybody has it before we get into, uh, our, uh. Expenses by department.
Right. I, I think I just, you know, point, remind everybody and point one thing out that, you know, this, the budget is a policy document. And this is where we set most of the priorities and where we don't have specific policies on other things. It, it's where you guys decide to put the money that is set, since the policy. This is always a really good read and a really good refresher. So if you haven't read through this section, make sure you do. A glass of wine or, or some coffee. Go ahead, Kyle.
Okay, so with that, uh, we will get into, uh, general fund expenses. And so, uh, before we dive into legislative, uh, I did wanna, I did wanna make a point on page thirty-two. We don't have to travel back there. I just wanted to make a point as we go through and discuss salaries on a citywide level. Uh, our salaries in twenty twenty-four for the general fund were, uh, budgeted at eight point eight seven million. These are salaries and benefits, by the way. Uh, twenty twenty-five proposes nine point three six million. And so you will see if you, if you collect all of that, you will see a five point five one percent increase. We have right-sized a handful, uh, of salaries. And we have also moved some of the park salaries into golf operations fund to account for the full cost of the operation. Uh, and so as you dive into, you'll see in legislative in page forty-eight, salary commission voted for a seven percent increase. And so you'll see that, uh, included and then just, and you can be cognizant of as we get into salaries and wages and benefits. Uh, what these numbers look like. And so as you'll see, there is a common theme. So on page forty-eight, we'll start with the second, uh, with, with the second section down. So we have salaries and wages, we have an increase of seven percent benefits, uh, we have a decrease of nine percent. And so you're gonna see this as a common theme throughout all of these departments. And that doesn't really make any sense on the surface. You should see an in-kind increase. And so what we have done is historically over-inflated. Uh, benefits to account for the maximum elections that each employee could possibly take.
So worst, we're a worst-case.
That's worst-case scenario, but it is, it is getting to the point where it's over-inflating these numbers. And they are not realistic because we are not coming close to hitting them year over year. And so we have tightened those up a little bit to give you a better picture of what is actually going to happen. Versus what we think a worst-case scenario might be. Uh, because, you know, as we have said, we have, uh, proposed five new employees. If each one of them takes the maximum election, we're still not gonna approach any of these other ones that we had been budgeting year over year. Uh, and so our current employees, we have an idea of what their elections are going to be. We don't anticipate any major changes year over year until we are allowed to tighten that up quite a bit more. And so you are gonna see that line shrink, uh, across the board, uh, as a proposal for twenty twenty-five and going forward as a more realistic number. Uh, so with that, on our summary page, page forty-eight, is there any questions, uh, on the summary statement before we get into the line item?
Yeah, so, so yeah, just, just as, as we go through this, as we have every year, summary page is great. Um, but a lot of, any questions you might have from the summary page are probably answered in the details. So sometimes it's best just to kind of give it a once-over and then get right into the detail. So there's none. Okay, so we'll jump in to legislative. Uh, we'll get, we're on page forty-nine, um, general fund. So it's a very short section, obviously. Do you guys have any questions on legislative expenses? Um, you'll see an increase in the election costs. Uh, and that's really about it besides the, uh, the salary commission raise. Give a quick pause, and if I don't hear any, I'm moving on. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
I think the only question is, in the past, on the legislative, the forty-one dash one hundred, the professional services. We've spent more, um, like in twenty twenty-three, so do we think it's enough for twenty twenty-five?
We do, so we had, um, we had, uh, I'm gonna butcher the name. We had hearing examiner services that we did not anticipate in twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four, that we do not anticipate going forward. Uh, so that, I, I think that in the short term for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, inflated that line item. That we don't anticipate going forward.
Good question.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I want you to compliment everybody when we look at actual for paid family medical leave. For two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, we've been able to reduce that by ten dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and just a reminder, as we go through this, I, I, at any next iteration, I've talked to Kyle. But just remember, the twenty twenty-four actual column that you're seeing is actual through the end of September, not the proposed ending cost. So there will be probably a lot of questions that come up, because I know I, I always have them every year. Okay, well, you know, there's still fifty thousand dollars that we allocated that we haven't spent yet. We have more bills coming in against that. So pop up and ask those questions as we go, if, if you need to. Okay, we'll move on to executive. No changes in, uh, FTE positions. Includes a bunch of software and whatnot, but we, that'll, we'll get into that in the line items. So page fifty-one, executive.
Question?
Yes.
Uh, huge reduction in the supplies.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get to the line item and we'll talk about that.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Um, okay, so salaries and wages, benefits. Um, are there any questions on that section? Not hearing any, um, so executive supplies, that's, that's where your question lies. I'll let Kyle answer that.
Certainly. So, uh, with the, the build-out and kind of the maturation of the community engagement commission. Uh, there were some requests heading into twenty twenty-four, uh, for, uh, some events, supplies. Uh, really deliverables that amounted to that, uh, I would say ninety percent of that forty-seven thousand dollars. And it was, um, it was mailers, it was production equipment, uh, to produce, um. Videos and, and online content, uh, that really didn't materialize. And not to say that we're taking it away, I think they've switched gears on kind of some of their interactions, uh, with the public. So, uh, the request was not duplicated for twenty twenty-five. And today you can see we spent about twenty-five hundred, uh, in that line item. So you can see the, the ability was there, but I think they pivoted on a couple of different spots where they, um. They wanted the flexibility to do it and then, uh, yeah, again.
Reality hits and what we have times.
Sure.
Don't, right? Okay, any other questions on page fifty-one from anybody? Okay, how about? Yes, go ahead.
Um, splash agreement. Uh, I'm trying to remember what exactly we're getting out of that. What, what is the benefit to the city on that?
We get a monthly full page, uh, and stories kind of on the back end of that for new employees. But, uh, we have our communication specialist, David Gaynor, and Tate and a few other staff, uh, interacting with them. And giving them content to publish, uh, for the city on a monthly basis.
Any other questions on executive? Not, we'll go ahead and move on to finance and administrative.
Real quick, Mayor, on, on the next page.
Yes.
Uh, fifty-two, we went through fifty-one, right? Yeah, to fifty-two.
Yes.
Um, you know, I, I keep bringing this up each and every year, and I guess I'll continue to bring it up. The Greater Spokane Incorporated amount that we're spending, um, we continually ask them for a report on what we're getting. For that, and I have yet to see it. I'm not sure that anybody else has seen it. Um. And so I, I, I have a lot of troubles with the twenty-five thousand dollar cost for Greater Spokane Incorporated. That coupled with the fact that as we've, uh, talked about before, uh, that is a fee that even the other cities, which are much, much larger than us. Uh, they're still paying the same base fee. It's not quite twenty-five, I think it's like twelve or something. Uh, and then there's, um, items on top of that. So I hope that we take a closer look at that, um, as we move down this road. Because I'm, I'm wondering if it's really something we want to continually, uh, continue to spend twenty-five thousand on.
Well, and you know, I know Gary Blue was here last year and his presentation did not hit the mark. And we, we've talked about that. So, um, I don't know, can't remember when the contracts due, and I know we're running short on meetings. But I would, you know, we need, we do need to have him come back and talk specifically about the benefits to Lurie Lake. Um, which is not what we got last year.
Visit Spokane has done the exact opposite.
Yes.
They've given us, uh, a playbook on what they're working on, all the things that are impacting us. And we continually ask GSI and we don't get it.
Uh, Kelsey, let's add that to our follow-up list. She's listening, she doesn't have to respond.
I see her. Thanks for bringing that up. Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Well, in that same line at Kate Conference registration, but then we've got dues, subscriptions, memberships, registrations. Also under, on page fifty-one, um, second item from the bottom. So what's the difference in, um, all these conference registrations?
So we have different requirements to house different. Conferences based on their material. So you have economic development, you have inland Northwest partners, you have these others. Uh, that the auditors would like us to charge these registrations to versus AWC. And I see all these others, uh, that would be under your regular dues and subscriptions, so.
The auditors add more lines every year, it seems. And it's an amount, it, it's more, it, it increases the transparency and increases the ability to track things.
So back to this, um, what do you call on GSI, I guess. The other one, what was it called?
Is it Spokane?
Where are they in all of this?
Legislative.
Forty-nine dot zero zero.
Top line on fifty-two. Sorry, top line fifty-two. Economic Development dues, memberships and registrations.
No, no, for the.
Visit Spokane, that's probably in the tourism.
So yeah, we have a big line item in tourism.
Oh, oh, oh.
And once, and Fund One One Seven for.
Cause that, those are all pass-throughs. We don't pay extra for that.
Oh.
We'll get, yeah, we'll see that, tourism promotion funds, there's three of them. Okay, any other questions?
This is one where, um, our actuals are about a third of appropriated for twenty-four, just haven't spent it all.
Correct. So they, we, we pay it when they bill us essentially. So, yeah, we, we anticipate that, uh, getting up to at least thirty-five thousand when they bill us.
Okay, finance and administrative, no changes to, uh, personnel at this point. And we can, and when we get to the, uh, transfers out, I'll turn that over to, to Kyle. Um, so. Really, no, again, since there's no changes in personnel or anything, so any, uh, salaries and wages and benefits should be pretty self-explanatory. Um, services and supplies, no real change there. Um, then we get into, um, accounting software. I don't know if you guys have any questions about that. It's actually less than appropriated last year. We're still expecting some bills. Um, fifty-five.
Oh, oh.
By the full first page with salaries and benefits and stuffs.
Oh, well, I do have a question. On that, okay, so we've got, um, line five one four two 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 one oh five, re- retirement treasurer, okay? And then we've got five one four two three two one oh five, retirement. I guess everybody else. So why is the treasurer broken out separately?
So we, and so we, um, Linda and I discussed this yesterday, and this is something that I, ideally in a perfect world, would condense down. This was pieced out, uh, with previous administrations. And it, it does provide for greater transparency if we separate out some of these. But it's not consistent with what we see through the rest of the budget book. And so, um, I, I would recommend we condense this into salaries and wages for administrative services. So you're not seeing, um, you know, salaries and wages, IT tech, we don't have that anymore. But salaries and wages for the human resource manager, salaries and wages for treasurer salaries. And so you have kind of this disjointed, uh, section of salaries and wages. And when you look at the bottom line item, we, uh, for salaries and wages, that O one O, about a third of the way down. That's really what we want your eyes to focus on, because that is the program for salaries and wages for administrative services. And that total is five, five hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And so, uh, to Linda's point, we don't have a good answer for that, and so we should condense that going forward.
Good point. Any other questions on the salaries and wages or benefits, Councilmember Kurtz?
Um, my question was on page fifty-four, um, towards the top regarding, um, the overtime for treasurer and then overtime. Looks like for the clerk. And this, I think, lends into the comment and the ask to have, um, the. More frequent meetings that take less time, um, added to the agenda coming up. And I didn't see it on our, our draft one, um, for next week. But I, it does seem like we do have a, a dollar figure, um. Assigned for some of our longer meetings. So I want to make sure we think about that when we're talking about our meetings.
Quick question to follow up on that. Do we have a certain amount that we allocate to the, um, specifically the city clerk? For each month of evening time based on the meetings? So, let, let me rephrase that. Um, if, if we have two meetings in a month. Are we saying we're gonna have eight hours of meeting time?
Unofficially, yes. Officially, no. And so what we do, we, um, uh, Kelsey and I have a pretty, uh, open dialogue. About flexing some hours where possible or taking, um, comp time in lieu of OT pay. And so, um, it is basically a, it's a monthly discussion on, uh, what the best, what the best route is for those extra hours.
So the number, the, the, um, overtime number that we have in here is based on what would be most likely, based on what would be in excess of that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, moving on from benefits and salaries, um, are there any questions on the supplies section? Really no changes there. Um, then we've got the services section starting halfway down fifty-five. Are there any questions on the rest of fifty-five? Yeah.
Just, just real quick on the, um, on the seventy-two, similar to, uh, Dan's question earlier. Uh, we've got it budgeted for one twenty. We're expecting to hit one twenty. Uh, it's just a timing issue.
Yeah, so, um, we will have audit costs start coming in to the tune of roughly, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars, I'd say. So yeah, that will get us closer to that number. Um, we are, uh, reducing some services as well. You'll see, we are, we're at one twenty for twenty twenty-four. Um, we will be able to cut off some of the, so we have a. We have a lease, um, tracking software that we use right now that we do not need to use going forward. And so this was a big, um, it was a collective scare, I guess, across Washington. About the new governmental accounting standards boards implementations for leases and IT agreements. And if you don't have them tracked right, then they're gonna ding ya, and then you're gonna get in trouble. And so, uh, the software based out of North Carolina called Debt Book seized that opportunity and basically wrote the playbook. Uh, for local governments to comply with these new GASB implementations, to the tune of about seventy-five hundred dollars a year. And so they really, um, they made their hay in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And we are now understanding, once we, once we know how the auditors are going to audit and track these leases and IT arrangements. We know that we do not need this service anymore.
Okay, uh, page fifty-six. Questions there? I'll just point out, I'm sure you, I mean, everybody can read just like I can. You'll see the, the decrease in the central services insurance, um, as some of that was moved over to, um. PD and golf ops. I guess, and if you have any questions about that, what line is it? Um, central services insurance, five eighteen thirty, forty-six zero zero.
And streets, streets is growing up too, so they get a chunk of this now, so.
So any question, any questions on page fifty-six? Councilmember Kurtz.
Alright, so this is one of the areas, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, where we've got the transfer out of two point four million. To the library fund.
Correct.
Okay. And that's in the five ninety-seven, seventy-two, zero, 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 one.
Yes.
Any other questions on that page? And you'll see the uh, the increase for Parks Narts as well, that transfer.
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
In regards on fifty six. Specifically under information technology services at three hundred and thirty six thousand. And we switched it out here a year or two ago. Was it, was it set up that each year we analyze that to see how we compare if we do in-house versus out of house?
Yes, and so um, the really, the main issue we ran into in having a. Justifiable comparison was um, the pool of. Labor that is skilled enough to execute um, not only day to day. I T operations, but backend, you know, cybersecurity and network management. And so when we had some turnover in that position, uh, the plan was to hire kind of a, a C T O level. Um, department director of sorts, and then have kind of an I T tech under that. Uh, that would really build out that department. And we just did not get any sort of legitimate applications with that. So that really hamstrung our ability to evaluate. Uh, inside services versus professional outside services. And we did review. Uh, four other companies last year uh, for outside uh, services. And so uh, you will see on. Uh, the November fourth agenda, a renewal um, for the executive tech agreement. It's an annual renewal. But it is in thirty day increments. And so we can increase and decrease that service with thirty days notice.
Do we ever anticipate in the future that it may change as we grow?
We will always evaluate. It's really, really hard to say that, yes, we will. Um, we will recruit and pay a premium for in-house services uh, to, to accomplish this task. Uh, without knowing really what's out there, but the evaluation will be ongoing, so.
Very good, thank you.
I think one of the other benefits is, this is where my private job comes in, is having service like that is, they take care of all the. The updated training for their employees that service us. So we don't have to, so we don't have to know what to send them to and what, what things to look for. That's their. Expertise, so we don't have to have that. That's another, that's a huge benefit. Um, but. You know, to Kyle's point, this is something that's ongoing, you know, it could be, we, we get, you know, close to build out or halfway there and. We, you know, we get to the point where we have to bring it back in-house.
Um, on, still that same one with five fourteen twenty three forty one. Um, can someone update me on where we stand with the, the vote tracking? Software that we were supposed to be using, that we're not using.
Yeah, remember we were using, we were trying to vote online. Now we uh, that's when we switched.
Was that, wasn't that part of Civic's plus, or was it?
So that was initially part of Granicus. That was our meeting management software that we had prior to Civic Plus. And so we had kind of our initial round of training in Civic Plus. I don't know that they have that software capability.
Done the other one, which is, and it never, the whole thing never really got installed completely, right? Kelsey's popping in.
Just gonna say, there's a voting feature within Civic Clerk, um, which we obviously haven't implemented yet. I think the hope was that that could be discussed with some of the. Um, council rules and dis- and procedures discussion. Um, I've had an opportunity now to get used to the um, minutes module and things like that. And so if it's. Um, councils, if council chooses to um, implement that, we could certainly get that ball rolling.
Yep, let's start talk, let's talk about that uh, first quarter.
Sounds good.
Question.
Yeah.
Uh, it's interesting with that because over the years, you know, we, we really discuss that a lot. We try to make changes and stuff to that. That's something that I feel that the citizens really need to have access to that. Because for the citizens, there is no way that they can go and track. On what their electric officials are doing and how they're standing and how they're voting, things are short here. I know in the past I've had a couple of individuals who've. Uh, checked to see how that could be done. And their comment was, well, you can go back and look at each of the agendas to see how people voted. That's not gonna happen. So I really feel we have a responsibility and, and we're, you know, we've been hamstrung by some companies who said they were gonna be able to do it, and it just didn't materialize. But I just feel that's very critical for the, our people we work for.
Well, if I can, I think the uh, even somewhat related to that is that if you're watching the meeting online. And we go to a vote, it's hard to see everyone, you know, you can kind of see some arms, but you know.
I can't get it all the time.
And so if we can have it on the screen, you know, Spokane City Council just has this little nineteen eighties light board that they use. Um, but if we can have it on the screen somehow, that would, I think, certainly help people who are watching.
I'll take the opportunity quickly to make an editorial comment. You each should be receiving a meeting notice to. Provide your assessment of needs for the facility's master plan. Those are the kinds of things we're looking for. Um, as gaps that need to be filled um, in that assessment. So, so please let them know those things.
Shameless plug there.
You know, I don't, I wasn't here for this, but you're talking about the Civic Plus thing here.
Part of our meeting management software, yes.
Yeah, but, but we, we obviously were paying them something for, what are we getting right now? Cause it says eight thousand.
We're, we're, it's our meeting management software. Kelsey, that's how Kelsey um, puts the agendas together, the agenda bills, the. Um, the whole packet, um, all that stuff. And, and it uh, it's also been really helpful. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kelsey, very helpful in her doing the minutes.
Yeah, and the minutes module and the voting feature is one and the same. So I'm using the minutes side of it currently.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all right, any more questions on fifty six? All right, moving on to what's left here on fifty seven. Finance, I T, computers, equipment, obviously. How do you wanna talk to any, any of that with regards to the twenty twenty four actuals appropriated and twenty five?
Yeah, so you'll see kind of throughout um, some of these line items, you'll see decreases where you will see these. Corresponding increases in each of these five nine one codes, these S B I T A. Uh, that is short for subscription based I T arrangement. And this is on the heels of what we had just discussed with some of these GASB implementations. So GASB eighty four was the implementation of leases reported as liabilities. GASB ninety six was released last year uh, as subscription based I T arrangements. Reported as liabilities on our annual reporting as well. So we need to account for these in separate line items going forward. And that is what you see here. So these are not new expenses. These are re-appropriated uh, from other. Um. I T arrangements and professional services throughout our budget.
We're not spending an extra fifty eight thousand, three hundred dollars. Councilmember Kurtz?
I just have a question about though, is it something, is it a software that you're required to use to comply with the audit? Is that what it?
No, it is based, so, so we've, so forever. Professional services and these subscription based I T arrangements and leases were reported as really. Activities within that year. So there wasn't a liability to report. Because they would charge you, they would bill you for it, you would pay for it. There's no liability at the end of the year. With these multi-year agreements, they're now requiring us to, to. Report that separately on its, what's called a schedule nine, is our schedule of liabilities. Uh, and we have to record that as a liability, just as you would uh, like. Uh, debt repayment or any other mechanism, even though it's not debt, it is, it is a lease, it is a contract for services.
It's an obligation.
So, yeah.
Is it a system, or is it just the audit, paying for the audit? Like, what is it? That's what I'm asking. What is it?
An obligation.
Right. So um, what is the, this specific I T arrangement?
Yeah.
This is, so this would be a, a portion of, of executive tech subscription agreement. So we have Office three sixty five. Uh, we have um, Fortinet, I believe. Evan, you might be able to answer this better than us. But we have subscriptions that we uh, essentially pay them on a monthly basis. That since the auditors think that this is gonna last longer than a year, we need to report as a liability.
It's like a platform?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just on a different line.
Yes, so it is, it is exactly as confusing as you just described it, so.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Nobody else has anything on fifty seven? We'll go ahead and move on. Hey, legal services. No change from last year now. Um, Kyle, you wanna take this or Mark, are you at me too?
Oh, no, I, I can start and then we can kind of expand from there. And so um. The discussion is, so we have our current agreement with Evans Craven and Lackey, which is uh, our attorney Sean Bouts's firm. Uh, so we have their, our agreement with them through the end of December of twenty twenty four. Uh, that automatically renews on a monthly basis if a new agreement is not in place. And so there is not. A uh, urgency to rush and renew. We can evaluate all of our options. I, I, I think. Um, you know, there may be different uh, different perspectives amongst council on. Whether we wanna renew versus go out and see what the, what the market tells us, but um. But for now, we will continue on a monthly basis with uh, E C L until we've. Get consensus otherwise.
Yeah, and I think, and I'll get to you in just seconds. So I think it was, was it the A W C or N L C meeting I went to? They all run together. Where, and I can't, I believe I came back and reported, you know, there is a nationwide shortage of municipal attorneys. And it's hard to find new ones. When you do, they're a hell, heck of a lot more expensive. Um, so this would, if we're gonna go out for, you know, to, to look at options, it's gonna be a real serious discussions. Cause we may, might open it up to a huge increase in, huge increase in cost, plus obviously if we would move a. Twenty some odd year history of um, that tribal knowledge that, that we would lose. But just, that would, that's for a future discussion. But, yeah, Mayor Partem.
I was just gonna say, is, sorry, is seventy two thousand really realistic?
Um, that's, that's our annual contribution. So we, uh, our contribution is six thousand a month.
Yeah.
And so um, you know, it's, it's not on us to tell them to do anything else with that.
But that was based on our previous contract.
That's based on our current contract.
Yeah, yeah. So the, I mean, the one that expires.
Correct.
At the end of the year.
Yes, and so that goes month to month. So the reason I did not, I did not speculate with an increase is that. The, 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 the agreement continues on a month to month basis at the, under the current terms.
Oh.
I, I guess the question would be, is it, I can understand the shortage of having people, especially that. Do we periodically look to see what other firms supply something like that? I would see the benefit for the council to be able to look at and say, okay, it's not we're dissatisfied what we have, but if it comes up, we see, there's only two other firms. Or three or four.
Yeah.
We realize that is it really a benefit?
Yeah.
To change if we're happy.
Yeah, we went, we went through that the, when, when we did this renewal, how many years, three?
We did three years ago.
Three years ago. Um, I think we had two other responses. Kyle, I don't remember if you were here yet or not.
I don't remember.
Must may have been right before, before you started. I think we had two other responses.
Very good. So uh, S T A actually went through a R F P this season for the rule of legal services for their agency. And I'm here to say that there are several highly competitive and very effective agencies who responded. Uh, I would not be afraid to consider carefully the services that we receive and consider what else is out there.
Interesting. Okay, great perspectives. All right, P D. Oh, maybe. All right, Chief's on. We'll let, go ahead and let you turn, get your. Mic on and your camera on, Chief, cause there's probably gonna be some questions. And thank you for the um, very detailed. Um, information on along the line items.
Chief sets the standard.
I'm having trouble starting, starting.
I gotta tell you, some of them got a little confusing. But more, more information is better. Um, so do you, but before we get into any line items, Chief, um, I like to ask you to kind of go, go through. Obviously, um, we're looking at adding um. Uh, one, one net new officer, and this is where things got confusing, even for me, when I knew what was going on in some of the notes. Um, because there's a distinction between what our new, our net new officer and rearrangement and. Backfilling of others. So sometimes you'll see like four new officers. Well, it's not necessarily four brand new, four additional bodies to the P D. So Chief, can you kind of go through your organizational plan um, for, for next year?
Of course, Mayor. Uh, can you hear me?
You can. Turn your camera on.
I'm having, I'm having trouble. It says unable to start video because the host is stopping it. So I don't know what's going on there.
Hold on, we'll get that fixed. You know, we wanna see, see your, see your tough face there.
Oh, you, you might be better off without seeing it, but. Uh, it still says that.
Huh, that's weird. We'll keep working on it.
Okay, um, just for the record, it says you can't start your video because the host has stopped it. It's a Zoom uh, error message. Okay.
We're afraid, we're afraid you're gonna do bad things in front of the camera, maybe.
No, 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 no. So uh, good afternoon.
Try it one more time.
Let me try it one more time. There we go.
There you are.
There we go. Good evening, members of the council, Madam Mayor. Um, good to see everyone and thank you for your time to review our, our budget this afternoon. Um, yeah, so uh, the one net officer, so um. We have, uh, unfortunately, we have a sergeant that is retiring. Uh, next year, um, we have a proposed new presented, uh, position as a lieutenant. To help with our span of control uh, and direct supervision of our patrol sergeants and our patrol unit. Um, and also um, we have a detective who is retiring. Uh, uh, in about the, the third quarter of the year. And so the hiring of the four, three of those are gonna be able to backfield the potential promotions of the lieutenant. The movement of a new detective into the detective's office and uh, the promotion of, of the sergeant, which has actually already occurred. Um, and so that leaves us with one actual new position.
Great. All right, do you wanna get any uh, since, since we're talking org structure, do you wanna talk about K nine and stuff before we get into the cost with that?
Yeah, of course. So we, over the last couple of years, and I know the mayor's been part of this conversation and, and, and a, in a couple of meetings that we've had with some of the. Subject matter experts in, in our area, but one of the things that we've considered over the last couple of years is adding a, a K nine position to. Um, to the department. Um, after careful consideration and some research and some consulting with. Um, both, both some subject matter experts from the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the Spokane Police Department, which um, just. I would like to thank uh, everyone who's been involved in, in, in helping research and um, consult. Us in attempting to develop this position in our um, both at Spokane County Sheriff's Office and Spokane P D, P D Department. I'd like to thank those, those individuals, but um, we felt that it was time with our commercial growth and our residential growth. To add that tool to our toolbox. K nines are instrumental in public safety. And remember, any programs that we develop in the P D. Ultimately, it's about public safety. Um, we've had some incidents recently. We've seen the increase in property crimes. Um, I don't know if that trend's gonna decrease, especially as, as our, the, a, a commercial arena uh, grows, our residential uh, uh. Uh, area grows. We're, I don't know if we're gonna see a decrease in that trend. And that's not just Liberty Lake, that's countywide and that's statewide. Um, but we've had some incidents lately where we, we could have used that tool. Um, the, again, they're instrumental in officer safety, they're instrumental in public safety. Um, as we know, dogs can do things that we can't do. They have noses that we, we don't have. Um, I'll give you a specific example of a, of, of, uh, an incident that occurred just briefly. A couple of months ago, we had a burglary at a construction site. Our officers were on scene for a little over an hour. Um, they thought the scene was safe. They were walking around attempting to continue their investigation after they thought the scene was safe. Only to determine after a shot, a flashlight was shone in a particular area on the site that the suspect was still on scene and hiding. Um. Fortunately, that individual didn't wanna hurt any of our officers, but. As a side note, they did request a K nine from the county. That K nine was en route, but got called off on a more urgent uh, matter. And so if we had our own dog, of course, hopefully that wouldn't happen. So that's a great tool. We've had incidents like that. We've seen an increase in pursuits. And other things like that where um, you know, we don't want suspects roaming, roaming around our community and, and when we can't find them. And again. The dogs have the nose to be able to do that. Um, and also they're, they're also instrumental in things like search and rescue. Um, because of their, their ability and their, their ability of scent that they have. And so I think that's gonna, it'd be a great tool, again, ultimately for public safety, officer safety and for the community.
And to point out, we already, you already have an officer who has done this before, who is interested in picking that, picking that up, correct?
No, so, no, so the officer who was selected is, is actually would be a new, a new officer. No, so, no, so the officer who was selected is, is actually would be a new, a new officer, but let me tell you, he's a go getter. He's one of our top DUI officers. He's one of our top performers and we're super excited. And not only us, but the entire, that whole K nine cadre within the, our area is super excited to get another colleague as, as high speed as, as that officer.
And you've identified most of the startup costs to come from the Police Capital Fund, which is funded by donations mostly from Rudy Dean, correct?
Correct.
Yep. All right. And I saw several questions for you here. Who's first?
Mr. Dunn first.
Chief, I'm grateful for the observation. I think I recognize that K nine is a really important commitment on the part of a specific officer. And that you have an officer that's stepped forward and that is, you got great confidence in. I appreciate that reference and makes me all the more enthusiastic about this.
Great. All right. And who is next? Councilmember Spencer or Kennedy? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I certainly look at a K nine as, as an asset, you know, part of the tools in our box here. But my question is that we an, an animal, I understand, is very, very one person, one officer. It's not like two or three officers are going to have that relationship with that dog. So the question would be, is it, if they're on for eight hours, off, whatever the case may be, what happens in the instance where they have to be brought in? Does that create a lot of more overtime? Those type of questions will come up because I understand that the dog would not be lobbied somewhere. It's going to be with that officer.
Correct.
Correct, correct. So there's always that possibility for call out. And, and we will have that ability to call that off, that officer out, and that will result in, in some overtime. Now, with that said, one of my goals is to do a quick evaluation of this program and potentially, hopefully through some grant funding that I've identified, and hopefully some donations at a second dog, hopefully by 2026 to alleviate that. So we have one dog on each side of the house. So that's, that's just kind of my future thoughts, just to, to let you know, just so that we can alleviate that call out.
Thank you.
I think we had Councilmember Spencer, then Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah. So Chief, is this the first time we've, we've had a K nine then?
No. No.
No.
Yeah, I seem to recall.
There was there, there were some personal issues involved with why, why the other one had to go. That didn't know what we could say and what we couldn't. Hold on, Chief, Deputy Chief's up here, Chief.
Yeah, long and short of that one is we just didn't have the right K nine and handler combination in order to facilitate that dog use. It didn't work out really well. So we had to terminate that program.
Okay. Question.
Very well.
Thanks, DC.
We, I think we had Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmember Kurt.
Well, I think you answered one of my questions, Chief, about where the dog is housed. Sounds like it would just be housed with one of the officers. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, second question is, and maybe this is a question for Kyle and Mark. Does this help our insurance situation at all for the purposes of safety? Or does it hurt, I guess, is on me?
I, I guess I, I do not have a good answer to that, and I could see the case for both. But I will look into that and I'll reach out and get some feelers and.
Yeah, if you, if it was interesting, you can find that out by our next meeting. That'd be great.
Thank you.
I think Councilmember Kurt's next.
My question was more along the line of it, of the dog being an asset and paired with the officer. And like I said, that was terminated before. And then wanting to make sure that we retain the team together. So how does that, I mean, it's not, it's kind of budgety, but not budgety. Like, how does that work if, you know, the officer decides he wants to go somewhere, he or she goes, wants to go somewhere else? Where's the dog go?
So we, we've had this understanding with the K nine officer that this is a five to a seven year commitment. And so they're there for, there's no promotions, there's no movement. They are there for five to seven years. You will see in the future that our, our association, the Police Association, come forth with, with some, some ask in regards to that specialty position. That's some things that they're proposing. With a K nine, you do have the ability to switch handlers. So if something happened to this particular officer and we had to send another officer to K nine school, that officer could assume that dog. So you, you do have that ability to switch handlers with, with the dog, with the, with the K nine handlers. So it's not, it's not a lost, it's not a loss if something happened to that handler and you're just, well, we have a dog, what do we do with it now? And so you just have to switch those handlers. So that, you, you do have that ability. That was one of the questions that I asked SPD and the subject matter experts that helped us from the county. And, and I've seen that happen before, working with those and working within the county.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, I think, go to Councilmember Ball and Van Orman, and then Councilmember Kennedy.
So Chief, is it accurate that the dog, the, the working, it's a working animal that really they only have like six, seven years before they retire? Is that right?
I'm not exactly sure. I think they work a little bit longer than six to seven years. I think it depends on ultimately their health. I've seen some dogs work longer than seven years, but I think you're correct. I think probably seven years is about the lifespan there. Again, I've seen some work nine, 10 years at the county, but I think about seven years is about average from what I can understand.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Orman.
I have two questions. One would be where we have on their field training officers, you've got 10 of them at $75. Is that on top of what they're currently already being paid?
Yes, that's a, that's a premium paid for existing officers.
So it's not 10 new, it's, it's
Correct.
With, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's part of the contract.
Yeah.
Place.
That's part of their contract.
Okay. And the other one is just kind of looking back, and I know that I'm going to get a constituent to go ahead and ask me the same question. From 2021 to 2025, we are, we have doubled our budget for police department. Do you want to kind of address that one a little bit?
Yeah, of course. I mean, a lot of that has to do with doubling our staffing almost, and actually doubling, because I, I think we've doubled that since I've been appointed. So I think a lot of that is salary and benefits. To be completely honest, I, I think we're understaffed now. What we've seen, but that, a part of that is doubling our, our staffing.
So we are setting out two officers per thousand, correct?
No, we're, we're just under 1.7.
1.7.
I think we're at about 1.67. Somewhere around 1.7?
Yeah.
1.71 ish, maybe?
For how many people?
For 27? Are you included in that 27?
No, the 27, no, that's not 27 officers. You're, you're including the two civilian staff. So next year, we will have 25 officers if the budget is approved. Right now, we're, I think we're at about 1.67. And I, and I did the math earlier. I think next year that puts us at about 1.7 ish, I think. Just over 14,000. I don't know what population you're using, what you're multiplying that, that 25 by.
Yeah, we're at 13,150 according to our budget.
Yeah. So I did 14,000, which put, put us at about 1.7 with the 25, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, and we're back to Councilmember Kennedy.
Councilmember Ball asked a question I was going to ask. Well, thank you for asking that question. Why I started chuckle is that I just saw something recently. Recently, somebody had posted somewhere else and said, if you, the perfect police dog would be a Chihuahua. Because they are an animal from hell. And no one would come into the city who has any bad thoughts of doing anything because that dog would absolutely
Run in every car.
So are we not looking at a German Shepherd or a Bulldog, but a Chihuahua from hell? Thank you.
Okay, all right.
And Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I will be, one of the things that I often do is I do a comparative analysis of our staffing compared to like sized cities within the state.
Yep.
And, and we're right in line with those like, like sized cities. And I'll be more than happy to, to get those that analysis to the council if they want.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Appreciate it. Yeah. And, and also compared, you know, obviously, we, we've been behind and we will always, pretty much always continue to be behind, both as a state and as a city behind the, the, the
The national.
National average. Mayor Pro Tim.
Chief, just real quick on the the 14% increase in the law enforcement furniture, computers, equipment attributed to the requested purchase of the three vehicles, replacing the three highest mileage vehicles. Can you tell me what the highest mileage vehicle, I mean, are we talking 100,000, 95,000 miles, 80?
It's well over, I can, I can tell you, I got it up right here. It's well over 100,000.
On each of those three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, vehicle rotation. So we have a 2015 that's at 126. We have 2015 that's 93, so that's approaching 100,000. DC's vehicle has 135. We have a 2015 at 102. We have a 2013 spare vehicle that's at 111. We have another spare vehicle that is at 121.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right.
Thank you. A lot of questions on this page.
Yeah, well, yeah. So actually, I'm going, if, if we're done with the summary page, if you guys want to jump into the detailed line items, unless you got a general.
Question, the last question I had is regarding, we've had some discussion about possibly motorcycle on it. Do we have anything anticipated for 2025 moving in that direction?
No, sir. One of the things I wanted to do is I really wanted to focus on, on priorities and, and, and making sure that we're putting our resources in the best place. And so my two top priorities were accreditation, number one, to make sure that we're operating on the best practices. And number two was the K nine program because I think as far as a community asset and you know, again, this is about public safety and looking at the trends and the calls that we've had lately in a resource that is really going to be beneficial for not only the PD but the community. I felt that the K nine program was much more important.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's no more questions on the summary page, we'll jump into the line item details. So Chief, I don't know if you got copy in front of you in case there's questions here. So I did want to point something out. So on the first section under salaries and wages, you do have two new officers listed there. Should be one. The third line down on page 60 of the budget.
And that is a holdover from 2024.
Yeah, that should be one.
Yeah, to account for the increase in salary, we have a fourth quarter of one and then a full year of that same one in 2025.
Yeah, because I know we moved one in from 25. Just, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so is there any questions on this first page, page 60, which is mostly salaries, wages and benefits? Councilmember Dunn?
The line regarding medical reflects our actual experience, not the total exposure related to, you know, benefit payouts.
Correct.
Anybody else on this page? Okay, next page, page 61. And again, the second line under 521103200 should be one new officer.
Correct. And I apologize, this was before the, the incident of
Yeah, before we pulled the one in.
Before, yeah, yes, yes.
What?
$1,000 for dog food.
I think I spent that in a month.
Keep in mind, we get a Chihuahua.
Is that dry or alpo or what are we talking about?
Save $800.
Councilmember Ball and Councilmember Kurtz.
I'm just curious, is the bite suit the thing that, you know, they wear to train them so they don't get bit to death?
It is, it is, Councilmember Ball, and I'm ordering one just your size.
Okay.
Welcome to the club. I saw another hand, I think Councilmember Kurtz.
What about like veterinary services? Is that somewhere in here too?
Yeah, that's included, I believe, in professional services, I can, if I can recall. It's included in there, so let me.
I saw it in there somewhere.
It's, it's there.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Kennedy.
Like I said, a lot of questions regards to the K nine over here.
It's okay, it's new.
If the, if it's about five or seven years or even eight years, and we would have this, this additional police officer. Do we have something in the fund when that person retires, that animal retires? Do we allow some sort of funds to go for his future food or that type of stuff, whoever takes that individual?
Do we buy him a gold watch?
It'd be a retirement package.
Call it, get some eagle. So, so Chief, does the, does the handler, usually, right, when, when a dog retires or keeps him, is, is, are the expenses upon that officer at that point, or to a good, great point that Councilmember Kennedy brought up, do we help support that animal still?
That is a good question. I can, I know that the, the, the dog typically goes to the handler. But I can get that information for you to see what the common practice is within each one of the agencies after a dog retires.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions on page 61? Councilmember Kurtz.
I saw this a couple of places, and it's on the 521104100. I see the note in here that travel for training in 2025 will be limited to essential training, training travel only. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I was going to touch on that prior, and I'm glad you asked. Thank you. So one of the things we were the ones to focus on coming into the next year is professional development, true professional development. And so moving forward, what we want our officers to, to do is have a road, a roadmap. Where do you want to go? And especially as we're growing, because we're going to have more and more opportunities within the agency for promotions and specialties and, you know, running different programs and all of these things. So we want to sit, the supervisors during the evaluation period to sit down and conduct a, a career development kind of a roadmap. So where do you want to go? Any training that those officers do have to be in, in line with that professional development. So if I, if I'm interested in becoming a detective in the future, is it really necessary for me to go to a firearm instructor school when I have no interest in really becoming a firearm instructor, just because the class is there and I think it'd be cool? So we really want that training, if they're, if they're, if they're doing training, we really want that training to be focused on their strengths and where they want to go in their career and, and, and how they can contribute to the department, you know, the most, in the most effective manner.
That makes sense. When I was reading it, I read it as like, we're not going to go to a lot of training because it's not essential. So I'm glad to hear that it's the opposite, that it's intentional and you're prioritizing things.
It's intentional. One of the things that we kind of noticed this year, and it wasn't, it wasn't rampant, it wasn't like this plethora of officers who were just going to, you know, training willy nilly. They were, we, we did have a couple of officers that were just taking advantage. I mean, the money was there and well, I want to go to this training. I don't want to go to that training. Okay, well, what are you going to, how are you going to bring that back? And how's it going to benefit the agency and the community? And so just kind of looking at that trend starting to develop, we were like, okay, let's, 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 you know, what's, what's the best practice? What, how can we make sure that, you know, those expenditures are being used in the best manner, number one, and how's it going to benefit the agency and the community? And that's that's how we came to this, the true professional development portion of what we're doing.
Right. All right. Any other questions on page 61? Okay. 62. More training, professional services, utilities, subscriptions. I know the chief has mentioned accreditation several times. Has anybody had any questions for him about that process since we've got him? Councilmember Kennedy.
I hope I'm not jumping ahead here, so let me know. Chief, I can recall about four years ago when we looked at the budget that you, was given to you guys on training was very, very low. I think it was $15,000 or something like that. And the concern was, or it came up, is that we should be funding more if we have, if we need that additional training. Has that been accounted for this year or last year?
Yeah, I, yes, I, I believe that our, our training budget is sufficient. Like I said before, it's just making sure that that money is being spent in the best manner. And what's going to benefit the department and the community? And ultimately, like I said, everything's about public safety. So ultimately, how are we spending that money and, and to make sure that we don't have people that are abusing that privilege? Because that is a privilege to have that, those funds there. And again, to make sure that, you know, when we send people to training, that they're actually bringing a, a benefit back to the agency, something that they can either instruct, teach, develop, so forth and so on.
Yeah, thank you. I know at the time that the council was very, very on board, is that if anything, we should not try to scrim or save money in that area.
I can tell you that I can tell you that, um, you can see, you can see the results over the last two years of the additional training that our officers have been able to go to. Especially in the investigative arena. There's, there's, there's cases that we wouldn't be able to investigate if our officers, or especially our detectives weren't able to go to those trains. There are things that our patrol officers are recognizing and, um, and, and crimes that they're being able to solve now pretty quickly, just based on going to training. Uh, and so it's, it's, it's paying off, in my opinion. Um, but again, we want to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the money that you all are allowing us to spend every year, um, in that, in that line item. And so that's why we went to this career development, uh, plan.
Thank you.
And Chief, can you, oh, go ahead, Kyle, before I have a question.
Finish your thought and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a little sidebar here.
Okay, so Chief, can you, um, talk to the council briefly a little bit about, um, when you've been able to bring training, host trainings at the PD, which then allows our officers to attend those trainings for free or reduced?
Oh, of course, yes. So one of the things that, that we've really tried to do is bring training inside, uh, to our agency. And we have more and more entities out there, independent entities that recognize that we are, um, willing to be a host agency for training. The benefit to that is we get free seats typically. So usually one to three to sometimes four or five seats, depending on, um, you know, the, uh, number of people who sign up. So that's been great too, um. You know, we, we've had some great training, we've got some coming here in the future, uh, and where we get those free seats and we don't have to actually pay a attendee fee to attend that training.
Great, great use, creative use of the resources. Um, I think you had your hand up for a second, didn't you? No, he didn't, okay. Councilmember Spencer, then maybe back. Oh, sorry, Kyle, do you want to jump?
No, no, go, finish your thought and then we'll go.
Um, yeah, thank you, Chief. Uh, and this, this is exactly what I like to hear, the fact that we're trying to get you the funds that you need, but that you guys are then taking those and saying, here's the best way to use it. I'm curious, um, as a percentage of the overall budget, uh, we're at thirty-one proposed for this year is how, how does that line up with other cities as far as as a percentage of the total budget? For, for law enforcement? Anybody have, have an idea on?
Oh, for the, the, the entire department cost?
Yeah, compared to other cities.
We can certainly do that analysis.
That, one of the things that I do, and I, I could get that probably that to you, um, that, that is one of the things I do. It's when I look at some of the similar sized cities, and I brought this to the attention of the mayor as well, I'll show her their budget for the, that year. Um, I know for West Richland, their budget is over ten million for the police department. Um, we, we, we've looked at them and I kind of monitored them closely, uh, because they're fairly, fairly close. Um, I know Airway Heights, their budget is a little lower than ours, but they have about five more officers than we do right now. Two, so, um, and I can get that to you. I, I can get all that information to you.
Yeah, I'd just be, I'd just be curious as a percentage of the overall budget, um, because, you know, we've been having conversations recently about our priorities. And, um, and I definitely want to make sure you guys have the resources you need, uh, including additional things that perhaps you hadn't thought of because you're just working within the parameters we've given you up to this point.
What forty percent said? Okay, alright, thanks. Alright, Councilmember Kennedy, then we're gonna go to.
Yeah, if I may relay something, is that I can remember several years ago, Chief, the conversation came up where, why is it, it seems like so many vehicles show up for something that happened in the neighborhood. I want to relate just a few days ago, I think it was Saturday or Sunday, in our neighborhood. We had a situation where there was, uh, something that went on in a home, and I believe there was five police officers that showed up for that. Uh, five cars and more police officers. And it was about eight o'clock, they showed up, uh, about quarter to twelve or heading to bed, or quarter to one, I, they, they were finally gone. For the next day, the, the buzz in the neighborhood was, well, what went on? Why do we have so many cars, things I sort there? The benefit of what the chief said three, four years ago that I remember, I was able to say to them, I said, well, maybe we didn't need that many officers, but realized it's a training for the officers who were able to show up at that. Maybe they only needed three cars, whatever it is, but the senior officers could look at this and say, okay, here's an opportunity, we can train somebody else. And it's very beneficial. So the end result of the neighborhood that we're in was very comfortable over the next few days because they felt that they were very secure. So I compliment you on, uh, sending everybody out, but you got to get that rat dog out there this next time.
Thank you. And, and one of the things that we're trying to make sure that we do, because we're seeing an increase in, uh, these situations, is we're trying to make sure that when we have, uh, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say a critical incident. Um, when we have a critical incident occur and we have officers respond, we need to make sure that we have enough officers to, number one, still proactively patrol the city. And number two, respond to a second critical, critical incident when it, when it, when it occurs. We've had several, we've been fairly lucky that it, it hasn't turned out, um, to be a tragedy. But we've had several incidents recently where we've had a critical incident and we haven't had anybody respond to a second one that's holding because of staffing. So we're trying to get to the point that, you know, where we're making sure that we're adequately staffed to make, to, to, to cover, um, both incidents that are occurring, uh, proactively patrol the city and any additional incidents that, uh, calls for service that, that are coming in.
Not going to figure it to you this time, I'll go.
Okay, this, well, we're gonna get on a little bit of a different topic here, so it's, I'd rather. Yes, it is, but I'd just rather everybody finish their thought before we get into priority-based budgeting.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I just need to clarify, because we had new papers put in here, according to what we had before, it has not doubled from two thousand twenty-one to now. I had five million something on that other paperwork and, whoa. So, no, it has not doubled. Thank you very much for the new paperwork, I appreciate that.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, so my question is a, is a little bit different, um, and I, this is for, for you, Chief. Uh, and kind of piggybacks on what Councilmember Spencer, uh, was bringing up. Um, instead of just having it be adequate, um, I'd like it to be more than adequate. Um, when you guys responded to critical scenes or, uh, or incidents. So I guess my, my question, Chief, is if we came back to you and said, instead of five point six, you know, we'd like to see six or six point five to get us closer to the forty percent that Darren was talking about. Um, where would, what would be your number one, uh, priority in terms of where, where you would spend that?
So I, I can tell you right now, um, request, and so I have a detective sergeant right now that is already saying that we, we need an additional body, um, in the detective's office, at least one. Because right now they are getting massacred. Um, they can't handle the caseload that is coming in. We have some really big cases going right now that I can't comment on, so it's taken away from, um, you know, some of the other cases that need to be investigated, especially property crimes. I would like to address our traffic issues. As many of you know, um, we are seeing an increase in people who aren't driving prudently throughout our city. Um, we are seeing an increase in reckless drivers. Um, I, I don't know if you are aware, but I got into a pursuit with one yesterday. Um, I mean, it, a, a danger to our community. Um, so we've talked about, um, having enough bodies to have a dedicated, uh, traffic unit, um, at least one or two bodies that don't have to worry about being tied down to the radio and who can go out there and look for DUIs and the, the traffic biolators, the serious traffic biolators. We are seeing an increase in our traffic complaints, um, from citizens. So we're trying to address those, uh, the school zones, which the mayor uh, and Mark has seen the increase in the school zone complaints. So little things like that, um. I've talked to, um, uh, Officer Howard over at the school and asked him when we're going to need another officer for the schools. When are we going to need another officer for Selkirk Middle School? Um, his words were soon. We can eat one, we could use one now, but that's been another discussion. Um, and also, um, we, we've had a discussion in the past about community, community oriented policing, um, which, um, in, in the big scheme of things, from a priority standpoint, um, is not as important as the, the ones that I've just mentioned, uh, previously. But, um, at some point, I believe from a public safety standpoint, it would be great to have a, a community resource officer who can work alongside the code enforcement officer and, um, do, um, educate the community and some of the, 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 the issues that we're seeing now, some of the, the things that Officer Kyle Fritz, who, who came and spoke with you, uh, previously, some of the things that he's doing right now, those, those are duties that typically in a, in a, in, in most agencies of community, uh, oriented policing are, a neighborhood resource officer would conduct. Um, he's just doing it as a patrol officer right now because we don't have the staffing to, um, you know, to have someone full, full-time doing things like that. So, um, there, there's been a lot of discussions about some things that we, if we had the staffing, that would be, uh, an extreme benefit to the community, we just, we just don't have the staffing, staffing at this point to do those things.
Well, if my, if my math is right, if we were eventually, let's just say for the sake of argument, we were to say forty percent, uh, this year would go to the police department, that'd be seven point two million. And, uh, excuse me, next year, twenty twenty-five, and right now you're asking, um, for five point six. So I just think it's important to, to point that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
And I think we've had this conversation before when we talked about like planning and engineering and Lisa, um, saying that she didn't have enough staff. And I think what I would like to encourage you to do, Chief, is that if there are additional, um, staffing things that you think would be helpful now, given that public safety was our number one priority from the community, um, I don't want you, um, or the police department to feel like they are understaffed. Um, and I, uh, now, I don't want you to feel that way. So if there are things that, um, that would be, uh, beneficial now in this budget cycle for next year, I would like to support that if there are specific things that you want to ask for, um, between now and when we finalize this.
Thank you. And I can go back and reevaluate that, that's something I'll sit down with, um, DC Morgan and our leadership staff about, and, and we can have a, a, a discussion about that. Um, but, um, you know, this budget was honestly about being fiscally responsible as far as the bu, the budget and not having, uh, this dramatic increase that's, you know, um, I don't want to say sticker shock, but, you know, one of those things where you're like, whoa, what is this? Um, and so balancing our needs and, 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 and doing what I thought was reasonable for, um, you know, the, the last four or five years and looking at the trends and um, the budget over the last five years, when I look at the budget, that budget, so.
There's also other, and we have talked, um, Chief and I and Mark, we, we've talked about other technology that might be able to be deployed, maybe not additional officers, but like, I don't know where I found this. At one point, there's this technology, I think it's in the Netherlands somewhere, it's called Actabump, it's like, it's a reverse speed bump. And they're honestly not that expensive, so it's, um, basically a plate in the road that when it detects the speeders and it, and it can tell there's, the technology is beyond me, but it can tell if it's a, if it's a, um, you know, uh, emergency vehicle or whatnot. But so basically this plate drops down into the road, not that far, but enough to slow somebody down. If it, if it detects some, somebody going over a certain speed limit. And I think when I looked it up at first, it was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each two-lane span or some stuff. But there's things like that. I know the chief's talked about, you know, the, the, the speed cameras that issue tickets, um, different things like that, um, that, that he and his team, deputy chief, are all, all looking at with regards to technology, can maybe take some of this burden off of our officers so that they can be more proactive with patrolling and then, you know, leave the technology to handle some of the others. So definitely doing a lot of research on what those tools are.
And I spent a lot of time at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, uh, this last week.
Yeah.
In the vendor section, networking with vendors to see if there's any technology that would assist us and fill some gaps that we have, um, it, with our staffing. And, uh, I, I made some good contacts and there's some things I'm going to look at in the future, but of course, those things cost money and so trying to, trying to find a way to fund those. I am always looking at grants and, and those, those types of things, uh, to help us out. So, um, as soon as, uh, the beginning of the year, the turn of the year, uh, occurs, and I'll be back in my, my, uh, grant mode.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to reiterate here that, you know, he, hearing, you know, that, that there are certain individuals that are buried with caseload, uh, that's a huge red flag for me. Um, it, it sounds to me like, like we're actually fairly well underfunded and I'd, I'd like to see some, some more things come back before we're done with this budgeting cycle on solutions to, to fix that.
Alright, great feedback. Um, alright, I think that was page fifth.
So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, sorry, I do apologize. I, I am going to, uh, hey, counsel, on a little field trip to page one ninety-nine, if you can. And this is, uh, one of the touchpoints we just wanted to highlight as we go through this process. You know, we spent, you know, ten or fifteen minutes talking about the importance of law enforcement training and ongoing education. And so what you'll see next year in the two thousand twenty-six proposed budget is a program dedicated to law enforcement training and education. It is page one ninety, one ninety-nine or PBB page thirty in the very back of your book.
Still, still getting there.
This is the lamest field trip ever.
It only gets worse from here.
Got everybody there?
Okay, and so with that, you're gonna see these kind of data points throughout every single one of our programs. And so I think the total cost may jump out, but it's, it's a hidden cost because it's all, it's all staff time, it's all personnel cost to attend these events, to travel to these events. You know, we do have obviously some non-personnel cost. Um, but as we go through, you see the description there, you see, what, we will, um, give you a better idea of these quartiles and final scores on how they align with our strategic plan and our priorities. Uh, but you have the description, we've, we've pretty well beaten that to death tonight, but, uh, the BPA stands for basic program attributes. And so these are the questions we're asking of every single program, uh, that we deliver within the city. And so is there a change in the demand for the program? Is it increasing? Is it decreasing or is it staying the same? And I think we can all agree that the demand for this program is increasing. And so that was the, uh, score, uh, that we gave this program. Are we mandated to provide this program? Are there state or federal mandates to provide this? Yes. So our officers have to have certifications, they have to have required trainings and ongoing education, uh, to, uh, maintain in their current positions. They have specialty, uh, items that they have to attend to and, and Chief or DC, feel free to jump in if I'm butchering any of these that, uh, uh, as we go through this. The portion of the community served, I think we can all agree, the, the majority of the population is benefiting from almost all of our policing activities as it is a direct, uh, kind of outcome that we expect, uh, a safer community as we increase these programs. The cost recovery of the program, we do not have a cost recovery. We, we have a very nominal one. So we got a reimbursement from CJTC, uh, earlier this month, Criminal Justice Training Commission, uh, for about sixty-two hundred dollars. And so, I mean, it's, and as, as Chief indicated, you know, we will, we will look for opportunities where available. Uh, we will have an opportunity next year with our current insurance, uh, come, with our current insurance company to get a reimbursement on some of their trainings and a cost reduction on our premium, uh, once we achieve accreditation. And so we will see some cost recovery for this program in two thousand twenty-five. And then the reliance on the city, uh, to provide the program. So other entities provide or could provide this service. To a large degree, yes, we are relying on outside services to conduct these trainings. Are there some hen in the house? Yes. Uh, but that's another evaluation piece of each one of these programs. And so as you can see, I won't, I won't read verbatim all of our priorities that we have under our, uh, community priorities, public safety and wellbeing on down, but you can see some of these alignments. So public safety and wellbeing is an extreme alignment with this program. And then a, as you go on down, there is some subjectivity in some of these, but we do our best to analyze each one of these priorities against the program and, and provide it a score. So you'll see this through every single, um, program that we offer and each one of these have touchpoints within every single line item that we have that we'll constantly kind of refer back to. Any questions on that specifically?
How so this program is, you say, represented on a specific line or all lines of the budget?
Uh, so it is, uh, so it's reflected in the salaries and wages primarily. And then you have professional services and training and travel that is reflected to a non-personnel.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, Kyle, so, um, we, we rated ourselves under fifty out of. Yeah, Kyle, so, um, we, we rated ourselves under fifty out of a hundred. Is that, am I reading that right?
And so, yeah, I don't have the exact, so this is part of our full transition to PBB is putting the scoring, like the scoring method in front of council to tell you, here's the score and here's how we got there. So we can all reach some sort of consensus on why this is, uh, either most aligned, some aligned, least aligned. Uh, so look for that as we continue to build this thing out.
No other questions for Kyle on that? We'll jump back to the line.
Page sixty two, I think.
Yes, we're on sixty two. Subscriptions, professional services, utilities. Are there any, any questions on page sixty two? What's going to?
Just real quick.
Okay.
Chief or someone, uh, can you tell me what small attractive items are?
My favorite phrase.
Yeah, that's easy. That's an easy one. So small attractive items are anything that can be, uh, picked up, moved and stolen. Uh, that's kind of how we, um, so anything that can easily disappear that we have to inventory and account for, those are small and attractive items.
Do you want to?
For instance, our computers, um, you know, uh,
Body cams.
Body cams, tasers, um, anything like that, that can, that can easily disappear. And I don't, that is a budgeting thing. You'll have to ask Kyle about that, uh, but that's, that's how we look at it.
So we will have in our next financial policy update, amongst a few other updates, we will have, uh, a more detailed fallen, uh, small and attractive asset policy where we identify what is the threshold, is it three hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars? And what is the process of inventory, what is the useful life? And so you'll see that a lot better defined. We have it kind of in practice, but not in writing right now. And so that, look for that in the first quarter of next year.
This is how our auditors stay in business. Okay, uh, page sixty three, uh, furniture, computers, equipment. This is where your, the three vehicles are, um, among some other things. Is there, are there any further questions above what has already been asked on this one?
Well, I just got a question. Where, where is like the range and simulator training type stuff found? I, I, I wasn't finding that called out specifically.
Uh, I'm not exactly sure what you're, the range and simulator?
Uh, yeah, range and simulator training. Uh, it's, I understand that you guys have to go downtown for that.
Oh, yes. Uh, yeah, if we, if we want to use, um, the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and their new training facility has a virtual reality, um, range simulator, um, that we can use. We, we just have to schedule the training for that. It's open for use by entities and, or agencies in our, in our, in our area. Our actual firearm qualifications and practice occurs at the Spokane Police Department Academy Range, uh, on Waterworks in the city of Spokane. So that's where we go for our actual qualification, so actual firearm qualifications. Our taser, um, less lethal, um, I'm sorry, our less lethal also, when I say less lethal, I'm meaning pepperball and, um, any other projectile style, um, less lethal training also occurs at the academy. Our taser training, we do in-house at the PD.
Where are those items budgeted, Chief?
Where's the cost for that?
That's in professional services, law enforcement services.
Thanks. All right, got that. Um, all right, not hearing any questions on page sixty three. There's not much on sixty four. Are there any questions there? I see a significant increase in the leases, but again, another, another accounting rearrangement. Kyle, is there any background you want to give on that?
Not a whole lot, um, really just this is the, I'm, I'm gonna, you'll, you'll, you'll hear me reference Gatsby eighty four and Gatsby ninety six. Eighty four was the requirement to report leases as liabilities. And so you've seen this kind of gradually increase as we house, uh, different leases that we may have considered professional services prior as leases. And so you'll see that incremental increase in that. And then again, the speed of right below it is our IT arrangements that we have to separate out as well.
All right, well, that's the last page for PD. While we still have Chief on the line and Deputy Chief here, are there any further questions on PD items? Anything you want to add before you go, Chief?
Yeah, I just checked with, uh, Chief Richmond out in Arroy Heights. They have thirty officers, including himself, thirty commissioned.
Right. And I forgot how big are they? Do you remember? I forgot.
They're smaller than us in population. I think they're about two thousand or so. But one of the things that, um, I've discussed with the public when we discuss our problems is we have to remember that just like Arroy Heights, we're kind of a, in a, a unique city because we're the port of entry. Um, and so Arroy Heights has the casinos, we have our ninety and we're the port of entry. So we have, you know, this, this influx of, uh, transitory, um, population that comes through. And in our crime that we seeing is, 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 I like to call it transitory crimes. It's not members of our community victimizing members of our community. It's people coming from outside of our community because we're sandwiched, uh, you know, in our metropolitan area and our metro area between the bigger cities, we're sandwiched. So, and, uh, you know, one of the things I tell people is you, you, you don't go to Goodwill to steal, you go to Macy's. Um, and that's kind of how I like to think of it. You don't go to Goodwill to victimize Goodwill, you go to Macy's to get the good stuff. And so that's, you know, we have to consider the uniqueness of our city being the port of entry and the transitory nature of our crime that we see.
At least Macy's doesn't leave their doors unlocked.
I plead.
All right, on to planning, engineering and building services. Lisa, thanks for joining us, for sticking around.
Good evening, Mayor and City, and City Council. How are you doing this evening?
We're, we're making through.
Living the dream.
In progress.
All right, so, uh, is there anything high level, Lisa, that you want to address before we get in, before we get into the, the light item details?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, so one of the things you're going to see on overall increase in salary and wages, some of that has to do with the fact that I had, uh, several new staff positions last year that we staggered in terms of hiring. And so I am now fully staffed. We do have, uh, our code enforcement specialist on board. We do have, we have a full-time city engineer, thank goodness. We have our, um, associate planner, et cetera. So we are fully staffed. The other thing that just as you look at the overview, you're going to see in terms of services and charges, you're going to see a big drop between what was adopted in twenty twenty four and what was adopted in, in, uh, twenty twenty five. I want to point out that the majority of that has to do with the climate resiliency grant, which at the time we budgeted last year, we knew what we were getting, but we didn't know what the, what the, um, what the grant contract was going to look like or the timing of, um, deliverables, et cetera. This year, um, we are reflecting what actually is reflected in our contract in terms of the timing and what we expect to actually get reimbursed for and, uh, what we expect to spend and getting reimbursed for in twenty twenty five. So that's probably the biggest difference between those two, uh, categories. But we are at full staffing, uh, which very grateful for. And so with that, that's kind of my just overview. Pretty much everything else is status quo. Um, I can talk to specific line items, uh, with differences, but, um, but there aren't a lot of major differences other than the fact that we have, um, professional services in, in, uh, for comprehensive plan stuff going on. And that's going to continue for another year beyond this year.
Okay. All right. So our first page, looks like we already have a question there for Tim.
Lisa, just real quick, uh, it looks like on page sixty six, the overtime for building permits, plan reviews, uh, which is great. We've only hit six hundred and thirty seven bucks this year. Uh, we had appropriated seventy five hundred and we're, it looks like we're staying at seventy five hundred. Do we need to still stay at that if it's not going to be anywhere close or is this just a matter of timing?
So it's, so we, we fund that because, um, it, depending upon what's happening in terms of, um, permit activity. We do have a fair bit of comp time overtime. People take it, tend to take it as comp time when they can, but there are times when we don't have the luxury of doing that. And so, um, we, uh, 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 again, um, our preference is to have them take it as comp time and we do try and manage it that way. But I have had years when we have really had to do that, where we've had to really actually pay the overtime. In fact, if you look at twenty twenty three, um, actual, um, was quite, quite a bit higher than, than what it is this year.
It was, the twenty twenty three was based on fewer employees though, right?
No, we have the same number of employees, the, the same number of, same number of permit, uh, building inspectors and permit techs.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on salaries and benefits on page sixty six? I'm not hearing any. Page sixty seven, more benefits. And we've got supplies and some of the services. Are there any questions, um, on that? Oh, well, so this, this is the question I asked and yours might be on your mind too with regards to the property on Aladdin that we were, thought we were going to have to abate. Kyle?
Uh, yeah, and so Lisa, feel free to expand on this, but, um, so we had obviously planned to, uh, either acquire or in some method temporarily take ownership of that property to restore it to a condition that meets code. And so that is no longer the case. Was that the result of a sale, Lisa?
No, actually it was not. So the, uh, it, for those of you who have been on council for a while, um, there's a lien, a DHSH lien on the property and the heir apparent never, there was no lease or, or there was no, um, will and the heir apparent never took control of it. They also hadn't paid the taxes. We were waiting on the tax sale because we couldn't identify an owner to even go after. And what ended up happening, happening interestingly enough is lo and behold, the taxes were paid, still hasn't changed ownership, but the taxes were paid. And someone is now living there and has cleaned up the property. So apparently the heir apparent is now leasing it out again or perhaps living there. I don't really know the answer to that, but somebody's living there and it's been cleaned up and it's no longer a nuisance. So, uh, and the taxes have been paid.
Always good. Yeah, always good when there's fifty thousand dollars that we don't have to spend. So, yeah, that was a good update. I was surprised to see it go away. So, um, great news. All right. Any questions on page six, oh, Councilmember Ball?
I, I guess I don't really know what this is about.
Can you get closer to your microphone, please?
Five five eight, five oh four oh oh two and five five eight, five oh four oh oh three. Cost recovery, um, colon revenue equals expense. What is this all about?
So this is, so we have, um, we, we have an on-call surveyor. We have on-call engineering services. We also have on-call, um, building permit services. And these are, um, these are expenses that get our pass-through costs to our, to the people applying for permits. And so, so it, the, the revenue always equals the expense. The, the only maybe discrepancy is when the expense hits versus when the revenue hits, but it always, but it always equals out. We have a line for parametrics. We have a line for, uh, we have a line for legal ads. So, so when we print signs, when we do legal advertisements, et cetera, those are all pass-through charges. We also have another, uh, line that is specifically for, um, the hearing examiner. So if someone, if someone appeals a decision, um, they are responsible for the cost of the hearing examiner. And it's, it's usually a pretty hefty cost when that happens. So we typically allow for that twenty five thousand dollar budget for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, Lisa, the last line, fifty dash forty one, is that dropped in professional services where the fourteen oh two Aladdin comes from? Or is that?
Yeah, so there, there's a couple of things that I would say. I, I, I would say that number one, um, because I had so many vacancies last year and for so long that we were spending a lot more on professional services that are not, that are not pass-through costs. Uh, having KJ doing the work of the city engineer as an example, and we had a fair bit of that. The other thing I would say is that we also had a reduction because we had like a forty six thousand dollars, I think it was forty six thousand dollar deployment, uh, for, um, professional services for training us in GIS Urban, which is a tool that we're using as part of the comp plan development. And so that was, so that we don't have that this year. We do have the licenses this year, but we don't have that, that professional service that was really to set up our, um, database and train us all in the use of that.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions on that page? If not, we will flip over to sixty eight. Questions there? All right, not hearing any. Um, we'll go ahead and get over to the municipal library. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Jandy, it's your turn. There she is.
It would help if I unmuted. Hi, guys.
Hello. Hopefully you're having a good evening. So we are up to the municipal library and I mean, just kind of asking the directors, is there anything at a high level that you want to go over, um, before we start getting into any line items?
Um, I have some exciting new things for next year that I wanted to tell you about. Um, one of them is that we are getting a library app. It's called Aspen Leda. You can download it from the Apple App Store or, um, Google Play. Um, it's a great opportunity for us. We are purchasing the app with our CIN Consortium, which is our group of libraries. To purchase the app on our own would be twenty four thousand dollars, which is a big chunk of change for us here at the library. But because we're splitting it with our partner libraries for us, um, this first year in twenty twenty five, it's going to cost us two thousand dollars. And then in subsequent years, it's only going to be one thousand dollars. So huge cost savings, but as far as benefits for our patrons, it gives our patrons access to a digital library card. Um, obviously like any other app, you just type in your login one time and then it remembers you. It makes browsing for new materials really easily. Um, I'll have to show it to you guys sometime, maybe in our quarterly report, but it has a screen similar to like Netflix where it has like the roaming carousels of brand new titles that we have coming out or maybe a collection that we want to highlight. And it just makes browsing really seamless where it will show patrons if there's an ebook available, if there's an audiobook available. It's all integrated together, which is really nice currently with our catalog. It's not integrated with Libby. So that's something I know our patrons will be really excited about as well. But that's just something new for twenty twenty five that we're excited about particularly because, you know, Target has an app, everybody has an app. And so this is something that I think our patrons are really going to enjoy.
Great. Uh, Jets, uh, Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, so is that going to replace Libby then?
No, so it's, we'll still have the Libby app, um, that people will use for ebooks and audiobooks. It's just, you would think when you go and you search Harry Potter, that it would tell you if it's available in Libby and right now it doesn't. So our patrons have to go to Libby and search it also there. So this way, if they want it as Libby, it's kind of integrated where it's like you can put it on hold or you can click on it. And then if they have the Libby app downloaded, it will switch over to Libby. So, yeah.
Great, exciting stuff. All right, uh, and you have no changes to any of your positions? Well, except for, I mean, obviously there was one, your, um, the one librarian position was planned for last year, but not filled, so.
Yeah, it hasn't been filled for this year, so we're rolling that over to a next year thing.
So, all right, so if there's no, nothing, um, at the overall level, we'll jump in quickly to the line items. So again, our first page on page seventy, we've got salary and wages, personnel benefits. Uh, then we get into some supplies and some services. So, um, Jandy's budget is not very long. So, uh, do you guys have any questions on page seventy? Jandy's budget is not very long. So, uh, do you guys have any questions on page seventy? Not hearing any.
Can I plug something else, Mayor, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, um, this is not a cost change, but as far as our database line item goes, um, we've had subscriptions to several databases for the last couple of years and we've noticed a, a decrease and they aren't getting very good usage. So we're switching things up in twenty twenty-five. Um, we're going to be getting a language learning app. It's called Mango Languages. And it's, obviously, it's a desktop, but also on your phone. Um, and it has, you know, hundreds of different languages that patrons can subscribe to and learn about. It does like the daily thing, kind of like Duolingo. You might be familiar with. So that's something we're really excited about and we're gonna try and push really hard, particularly in January with New Year's resolutions, like wanna learn a language this year? You can do it for free through the library. Um, the other one that we're, um, switching over to is Canopy Streaming. It's a streaming database like Netflix or Hulu. Um, and that's something that we feel like a lot of people are interested in right now is streaming. And maybe it's not something that's as affordable for everyone. And I don't know about you, but having multiple streaming apps, you're like, wow, this is just as expensive as cable used to be back in the day. Um, so that's something that we're subscribing to for twenty twenty-five, um, where patrons will basically get twenty-five tickets is what they're called, and it will give them the ability to watch multiple shows throughout the month. But, um, there will be a cap at some point. Um, so that's something else that we're trying out for twenty twenty-five as well as ABC Mouse, which is an early learning app for kids. So we're kind of changing things up and trying to see, um, what our patrons might be interested in that's different than what we've given them in the past.
Right. Do you have any examples of the, some of the ones that you, that are going away? I'm just curious.
Um, so the one, one of them is called Learning Express and it's a test prep database. Um, it had different test prep like GED, um, but also a lot of the trade testing. Um, for police firefighter, um, it had the NCLEX one for nursing. So it was a lot of practice tests. And it's something that we've had since twenty twenty-one and we just aren't seeing good usage on it anymore. Um, another one is, um, a teen one that was for, um, we have one for, sorry, it was for like writing, um, English papers, opposing viewpoints. So in English particular, like in twelfth grade, you'll have to write like, look at both sides, examine both sides and then choose a side. Um, so that's another database that we weren't seeing good usage on that we're getting rid of.
Okay, great. I'm glad you're, you're constantly reevaluating what, what your offerings are, so.
Yeah, we track it monthly, all of our usage for databases. So we're just gonna try some new things and see what works. We think, we think these will do well.
Well, you know, what, maybe, uh, the, the council can make an investment in the language, language app and we can, you know, start having our meetings in Swahili or something.
Yeah.
Ahead of us in a couple of other languages.
We've seen an increase in those asking for, um, English learning. And so that's another piece of it is that it will do, um, English as a second language.
That's great. You know, some, some native-born Americans here who might need some of that help. All right, um, sorry, getting a little punchy tonight. Is, are there any other question, any questions on page seventy for Jandy? Okay, um, and there's really not, not much more on, um, on page seventy-one, obviously, you know, the, the self-checkout stations, new computers, the soft seating are all things that would be portable.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, so that, uh, first line item there at the top of seventy-one, um, assuming that just is, uh, training the librarians on transients coming into the library type of thing?
So it's called, um, it's by Brian Dowd. Um, it's a homelessness training. Um, the great thing about it is this, it, it kind of started as training for homelessness, which is something that we are seeing an increase of at the library. Um, but as well as that, it has training across the board on things like customer service, de-escalation, um, all those kinds of issues that you see just in general customer service. So that's why I selected this one is because it has a niche thing that we are, um, wanting to do training on, but then it also has everything else at the same time. And so it'll give us access to everything for the whole year. So I'm planning to do some required trainings for all of my staff on homelessness. And then, um, once a quarter, having them pick another training to do, um, whether in something that I think that they are interested in or something that I think they need to work on.
All right. All right, there's no other questions for Jandy? Going once, going twice. All right, thanks for being here, Jandy. We appreciate it. Have a good night. All right, Jen, you're up. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
All right, same offer. Do you, is there anything you want to address at, at a high level? Um, and I'm, and I know you have some of that because we made quite a few changes this last um, in your department. So I'll let you go ahead and take the reins and kind of walk through those thing, those changes and what's coming for twenty-five.
Yeah, so, um, department-wide, we obviously had a tremendous change and transition, um, at the middle to later part of this year. And so we're still working through that, but it's gone very smoothly and very rapidly. Um, Ben has been a huge blessing in disguise to come in and start that new department. Um, so as I browsed through budgets this year, um, my workload on budgets was, uh, quite literally cut in half, um, which was amazing. Uh, so I was able to really focus and have really solid conversations with my staff and plan a little bit more clearly, um, instead of trying to just not forget something with being so spread out. So, um, really, our, our department as a park, a new Parks and Rec Department, which is what, um, I believe we're going to be called next year, there really aren't that many changes other than, um, just I have, I have less line items that I'm overseeing as a department head. Um, we are adding one more crew lead next year and eliminating the last two seasonals that we plan on permanently eliminating. That will leave us with four seasonals on the golf course. Those I don't foresee ever, um, getting rid of in the near future. Those are, those are fairly constant seasonals that we use on a yearly rotation that are purely dedicated to the golf course. We don't share them with parks or streets or roadside or any other area. Um, and that's also fairly typical of other golf courses where they will bring in seasonal help in this region and lay them off in the, um, spring or in the fall and winter season. Um, because we have turned out our seasonal staff in parks, we've turned them into FTE maintenance workers and crew leads, which is again, uh, a very positive thing for us where we can invest in teaching these staff. We can invest in having time with these staff, not only year-round, but investing in them on a long-term basis. And, and we have grown many of our staff from seasonals years ago that are now crew leads and beyond. Um, so it's, it's quite the investment to be able to, not that the seasonals weren't important, they definitely played a huge role for a very long time. But it's nice to kindly, finally have reached that uh, plateau of what we've been trying to achieve for at least ten years where we were the high percentage of our staff was seasonals and now the main percentage of our staff is, is and are FTE workers. So we've come a long ways. It's been a long process. We've been through many administrations with this mindset. We've been very fortunate to be blessed and supported by every administration through this process, which I find very interesting. So even though the councils have turned over, the mayors have turned over, because this has been through three mayors now. Uh, it's been the same support through each phase, uh, of turnover in that realm. And so, um, we're very fortunate and I finally, it's all come to fruition, so.
Great. Um, uh, people may be curious about, um, ha- having a, um, new landscape maintenance person?
Yes, so we're, we're.
Could, we'd had some, some resident comments over this year about some of that.
That has been our weak point for, uh, the last couple of years particularly. Um, we had a, a seasonal horticulturist on staff who was top-notch, um, a ve- very rare find. She stayed here for six or seven years. She left. And ever since she left, we haven't had the, the staff to focus on some of those areas that she was able to focus on. So, long story short, um, between some conversations with Ben and the need that they have on the roadside, uh, landscape, that, that's upaway medians, the Liberty Lake medians, the roundabouts, along with parks, the small landscape pockets around parks, our street trees, um, our landscape areas on the golf course. We decided now is the time to pull the trigger and look at that full-time landscape maintenance worker. Not only one position, but two, so that there's a team. Mostly because it does take two people to support each other in a, in a, in the, in the amount of acreage that we have to maintain. We need those positions to be focused and experienced and skilled in that particular trade. Um, it isn't necessarily something that can easily be taught from within. And, uh, it will be a shared, um, a shared set of responsibilities between my department as Parks and Rec and Ben's department as Public Works. Um, because that is how the split has happened, um, regarding roadside items versus Parks and Golf items. Um, so it should be a really good fit. We're looking for a landscape lead and a landscape maintenance worker to support that. They will hopefully be certified arborists. Yes, we did field, um, several complaints. I won't say hundreds or twenties or even tens, but we did receive complaints this year about, you know, the weeds and uh, some of the maintenance in some of those areas. And that was just really a scramble to get to those areas. So we relied heavily on landscape contractors to support us. They are not cheap either. Um, so we're kind of at a point where the amount of money we're, we've been spending on landscape contractors is gonna start weighing out by actually having our own people on staff, uh, year-round.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Tim.
Um, Jen, thanks for bringing, uh, um, this forward as well. I, I had a question somewhat related to this and that is, so if, um, if one of those, um, new landscape texts or whatever we're calling them, I can't remember the official name. Thank you. Uh, if they decide, hey, we need to, you know, inject some trees or we need to do something, um, uh, do we have somewhere in the budget, and maybe we do, and I'm just n- not seeing it, um, where that is accounted for?
Yeah, so that would be, um, under the, either the park supplies line item. So they would literally be buying the pesticide or the, or the uh, fertilizer or whatever the product is, and they would be applying it themselves. So that's just a, a park supply line item. Or, um, they would contract that out. So we are, I, at least I was still proposing that we maintain our certified arborist contract, which we do have a, an on-call three-year agreement with them. That's who we relied on heavily all these years to get us through a lot of those items, be it trees, be it landscape weeds, be it pruning. Um, so in this transition year where we bring two people on, I would like to propose still maintaining that three-year on-call agreement. And so they would still have the potential to call them in this first year to do some of those professional services if needed, if they needed that support, because it's gonna be a sort of a, a fact-finding, mission-finding year with these two new positions. And these are positions and people that really need to know their stuff and come in and hit the ground running, but they're gonna have to get, they're gonna have to get the lay of the land. And so to have that support by the certified, um, arborist on call through the professional service line items, which are already budgeted because we've been using those, they would be absorbed into that. A lot of that, my guess is they would probably rely on some support that way. So there was no change in that professional service line item, anticipating that we will use them less likely, the certified arborist. But it will be there for them to lean back on to get their feet under them this first year.
So under park supplies, then the five-seventy-six, eighty, thirty-one, oh-one, uh, you've got thirty for next year. Um, and it looks like this year's gonna be in excess of that. Is thirty enough?
Yeah, because a lot of that our staff was keeping up with. I mean, I, I would say to the best of their ability. I, I'm hoping to, again, it, it's a, I think it's gonna be a wash this year. There will be a few supplies to get them set. But we have a lot of supplies left over still from past horticulture, uh, seasonals. And a lot of the staff is using a lot of the, that product now. A lot of those pieces of equipment, those tools. So I don't foresee a huge amount of, because we're landscapers. At, at the end of the day, we're landscapers anyway. We just happen to focus on turf grass and maintenance of ball fields and facility, you know, pavilion, um, playgrounds, that kind of thing. So we have the core and the bones of what they're going to need. I don't foresee them needing a whole lot more, but we, we did increase our small and attractive assets line item, I believe. Um, and so that, that again is that line item where they're gonna buy a piece of equipment that's an easy tool to walk away or be stolen if something gets broken into. And so that is where we would, you know, if they need a, a pole prun or a pole saw, you know, it, it might come out of that line item. So I don't foresee, it's not such a brand-new position that it's gonna incorporate this whole huge new budget line item in itself.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, to add on to that as well, so a lot of the, the need for the landscape is, uh, street trees as well. And so we will, to the extent that we can carve that out, we will charge that to street operations. You will see a line item, uh, in one, uh, Fund One Ten Street Operations for that as well.
All right, so if there's no more high-level questions, we'll jump into the line items. So our page seventy-three, um, salaries, wages and benefits. Are there any questions on that? You'll see, um, as we talked about before, um, some movement of, um, some of those salaries over to the golf course, um, and whatnot, as we talked about earlier. Okay, page seventy-four. Um, we're getting into our supplies, um, as Mayor Parton was asking about a couple of these. Jen, is there anything on here you want, wanna point out at all?
No, just, you'll see shifts like on a five-one-eight-three-zero-three-one-zero-zero. And that line item has now moved over to Ben, uh, with Public Works. And a lot of that is going to be the additional, um, work that our in-house facilities crew is going to be taking on to assist in park facilities. So the idea with facilities originally was to have them also take care of park facilities, park restrooms, park buildings. And we haven't had the capacity to do that until this year. So they are increasing that line item in hopes that they can now step in and do a lot more of the work within those facilities on these park and golf areas. But some of these line items are definitely shared now with Ben. So if there's a specific one that jumps out, I'll make sure and mention it if it's Ben's.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, on, um, weed control supplies, you have your staff is training to become pesticide licensed to apply uh, pesticides in-house. So it's, it's more than it was last year, but wouldn't that save us money if they're doing it in-house?
No, because they're actually using more product because they're doing it instead of having the contractor come in and do it.
So that includes product, okay?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's good. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. No other questions on seventy-four? We'll jump to seventy-five. Um, Jen, you wanna touch on, um, the first line there, um, with regards to the, uh, fifteen thousand for the, um, proposed HVAC preventive maintenance? That's new.
That's a Ben que- see, that's a Ben question, uh.
Yeah, and I can, I can speak to that as well. And, um, so you'll see.
Oh, Ben has his hand up.
Oh, I did, I, see, he was on here. Ben, go ahead and jump in. You don't need to raise your hand, but you need to turn your camera on. I'm requiring that tonight.
Trying to figure, can you hear me, Mayor? I think you can, because I'm seeing my audio move. Uh, I'm never, how do you get your camera on? This is tough.
The, the camera icon, Ben.
There's a cam, on the bot- bottom left. Video?
I only see audio.
Oh.
I have to talk to Evan. I'm sure I'm not doing this on purpose, Mayor.
No, it's okay. Well, Chief, Chief, Chief was having an issue earlier. Well, just go ahead in the essence of time.
What? Did Evan maybe miss giving him panelist permissions?
No, he's not. There he is. Okay. We got you.
All right, so just, just a quick thing on the HVAC, um, so we, this was, this was, uh, actually a consent agenda item from a couple of months ago. Uh, so in the past, uh, we haven't been doing preventive maintenance on, on the HVAC systems for any of the city buildings. Uh, this is a contract with Apollo Mechanical Contractors, I believe is the name, uh, that provides quarterly maintenance on City Hall, Trailhead, Police, Library, uh, Public Works to include the Little House. I think those are the, I think I got all those. Uh, so this is, this is just that, adding that, um, approved consent agenda item into the twenty-five budget.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I forgot about, that we had looked at this before, but this just amazes me that we hadn't been doing that.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Ken.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Is that a one-year contract?
Oh, it's a, yeah, yes, sir. It's a, it's a one-year contract that we, we renew every year if we, if we decided to stay with the same vendor.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, now, Jen, I was, I know you were ready for this question. Can you walk us through the new rec software?
Uh, yes, I'm trying to find it. What line and I'm, give me the.
It's got four lines.
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so, oh boy, here's another one that we're past due forgetting. So uh, McCall and I, with McCall on board this year, again, it's been a wonderful addition. He's amazing. Um, he is able to just jump in and focus. Well, we have a website that shows patrons and citizens our park information and our facilities information, our shelters, our field spaces. It informs them about them, but it doesn't provide the capacity to allow citizens to reserve anything online. And as for years, we've wanted to do this. For years, we just haven't taken the step to do it because as we've gone over the years, we've gotten busier and busier, but for a longest time, for the value of what we were going to pay, it really wasn't worth it because it wasn't justified by how busy we really weren't, even though we were busy with reservations. So this is kind of the year where we looked at the qua- the quantity and amount of reservations we've been getting requests for. Everything has been paper copies to this point. It is time to exit the dinosaur era and move into uh, what everybody else around here is. If you look at just about any city's website around here on their park and rec side, they have the capability to reserve a picnic shelter online and pay for it, reserve it. Look at the dates on the calendar, see which dates are blocked out, such and such. So we are just kind of coming up to speed. This um, is a software that is, it's called Civic Rec. So it's like Civic Clerk. It ties into our existing website. Everything should adapt really smoothly. It's well-used, well-known. We've done a lot of research on it. So we're really excited to um, implement this. And that, if it is approved, is what McCall will be spending his early winter months next year working on.
And that allow, that'll allow reserve to sign up for the other rec programs too. Anything with uh, um, British sports camps and Skyhawks as well?
Yeah, so they manage their own programs and their own registrations. I, I think that that will still say, we just, we just steer them in their links to their page. I don't think that will change, but the shelter reservations, the commu- you know, community event things, the the field reservations, we have a lot of field reservations. Those will all be streamlined through um, through the website if, if, and I, I, I could foresee the majority of people uh, reserving that way and the few rare handfuls will probably maintain, continue to do paper copies.
Well, it'll certainly free up a lot of time.
Yes, yes. And right now, um, the way that we track all of these calendar dates and reservations is on Outlook. And so we take an Outlook calendar and we hope that we don't duplicate. We're pretty good at not doing that. We're pretty thorough. Um, but it is very monotonous to hand enter in every single reservation and share it out to the appropriate calendars and uh, keep track of Outlook. It is not built for that. This civic rec program will be built for that.
Yep. Perfect. Anybody have any qu- uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, under the special events, professional services, 2,000 for Winter Glow sponsorship with PNA support. I assume that PNA means Parks and Art?
Correct. And that's the recommendation they provided this year to increase it by 20%.
Right, correct. Thank you.
All right. And there's also a, a huge jump in the fireworks. Um, I'm hoping everybody will consider that. The uh, the show, because we had a fixed price contract and prices went up, was very, very short this year. And in fact, I thought it was so short, I thought something had gone wrong. Um, so I, I appreciate um, putting, putting uh, the extra money in there for that. Um, Councilmember Kennedy, you had a question? Okay. All right. So um, hopefully you guys will consider and prove that. Um, anything else on that line item? Um, the 86.5, any questions on that?
Actually, I do want to say something to that is the 12,500. When that was brought up in council, I pretty much believe that unanimously we had council support of about $12,500. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've had citizens ask about doing a drone show. Definitely cost prohibitive at this early stage in the. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Uh, my question was on 576 80 41. Uh, implementation of new asset planner software split with um, Public Works. I was wondering how that differs from like the asset management tool that we have.
And Ben's gonna jump in on that.
I can take this one too. Uh, so at, uh, Councilmember Kurtz, you, you're correct. Asset Planner is the software we use for our asset manager for all our facilities. Uh, to include all the parks facilities. Um, what this budget line item is increasing for is to en- to enhance that capability to include faci- uh, work order management, fleet management. So it's basically another bolt-on uh, part of that existing software that allows us to do a lot more. I want more professional facility management and fleet management because right now um, Jen brought up a good example. We use an Outlook. We're currently using Microsoft Word for work orders. So there's no, no data, an out, no data collected on anything we do. Uh, all we have is uh, what's in Brian Bachman's head. Um, so this allows us to collect everything and kind of, and that, we think it'll help us budget a lot better in the future because we'll be able to collect it on, on where we're spending our our time and money. Um, so that's what this is. And it's kind of an, it's a, it's an, it's an extra increase in this budget year because it's part of the all initiation of new data collection for all of our uh, fleet and all those things. So it's, it's not going to be that high every year. This is just kind of a one-time cost for training and things like that to uh, initiate the initial modules and asset planner.
And then same for our fleet, you know, we're, we're recording it on a spreadsheet and, and we have so much fleet sitting out in that shop. We need to get all the details of the year, the, the hours, the maintenance, the, the lifespan, um, who's driven it, the fuel. We need to get everything onto a software that can populate data off of that. We're just at a point where spreadsheets just aren't cutting it anymore. So.
And we're really hoping there's an app too, so we can be like the library.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like we're growing up. I, this amazing, amazing things this year with.
Feels good.
With being able to track things and, and, you know, and Mark and I are very database. So to be able to pull that, that that history and do some analysis on, on what's going on. Great. You look like you want to say something.
Well, generally speaking, we've talked about this before in other capacities, but this is just um, an extension of that principle over all of the um, assets that we uh, manage. That is, in order to effectively plan um, and, and execute, we need some basic things. We need an inventory, we need a condition of that inventory, and we need a needs assessment that's rolling. And these tools help us build and maintain that over time and give you the information that you need to make the best decisions year over year in the budgeting process.
Well, we're even talking about it. So, you know, at some point, you know, having a tree, our tree inventory, you know, you saw we had to, we had to cut down some of our trees along long molter um, this year because they're, they're aging out. They're getting to the end of their lifespan. And to be able to plan for the future and how, how often, how many we're going to have to replace and when, because that can be a huge expense. So we're looking forward to having all of that at our fingertips. Okay, they, anything else on page 75? Okay, and my, looking at, at this 840, I'm, I'm I'm figuring price, once we get through this, we'll be through the general funds. And so we can maybe call it quits and then start with the next section at the next special meeting. So we are on page, um, throwing me off because everything is printed over 76. Are there any questions on page 76? We'll make kind of through that. Obviously, the, the re- the window replacement, that cost fell off. Nobody? All right. There's your small and attractive assets line item. Then page 77.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, the very fir- thank you, Mayor. Very first one, parks, other improvements. Uh, the garbage can, 24,000 for 17 trash cans. That's $1,411 per garbage can?
No, that, that's the project number. Probably that the PF 17 is the lo- is the project number.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
But, but this is government work. But, but actually, actually, but the Jen, I'll, I'll let Jen or Ben answer that because they're, they're actually not trash cans.
Well, they're, they're trash receptacles uh, based upon our code requirements for the dumpsters. Yeah, right now, we just bring in temporary dumpsters, but we really need our permanent dumpsters with the appropriate.
Uh, how many trash cans are we buying for 24,000?
So the, uh, Councilman, uh, Member Kennedy, uh, this also includes like the CMU block wall around to kind of disguise the dumpsters as well.
It's not the dumpster purchase, it's the building of the screening around them.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, you can also, um, just as a point of reference, go into the CFP to that project number and it'll tell you the units that are covered by that expense.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then I'll, I'll mention on, on the next one, Pavilion Park, other improvements.
Sure.
Uh, that tennis basketball court resurfacing did finish this year. So I don't know, um, Kyle, if we should change that.
So CFP PF6 is complete?
It is complete.
Okay, we will, uh.
That was meant to be carried over in case they didn't finish, but they were able to finish with this late fall.
Okay, we'll include an updated sheet for council on November 12th.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, and um, everything else on the um, the last line for parks, furniture, computers, equipment, um, those are all in the CFP. Uh, Councilmember Paul.
Um, Jen, what's the 11,000 for Rocky Hill Park? What's, what, what is that for?
That's probably the restroom painting also that was, that happened this year would be my guess. I don't know what that is. It doesn't have my initials by it, so I'm not, I I'm not sure.
Hmm, Kyle, can you take a look at that line?
I will have an update on that one as well because I don't have any notes on that.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. There's no initial on that. So, but I don't think we have anything proposed for Rocky next year. And I don't think we discussed anything, did we? Yeah.
Don't remember.
Might be the restroom painting. That sounds about right, which we did this year.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, when you mentioned an arborist earlier, who, who do we use on trees?
We have Bartlett trees, uh, Bartlett tree experts on call on three-year agreement.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, that wraps up our general funds. Um, great progress tonight, great questions. We've got some things to follow up on. Um, so our next, we obviously have our regular council meeting on the fourth. We don't have any budget discussion scheduled for that because we've got city, other city business to do. And we have the next budget workshop scheduled for the 12th.
Correct.
Six o'clock. Yep. So in the, in the, in the meantime, if you got, you know, just go through and have your questions ready and um, you know, if there's something that you need an answer to, you know, before that, shoot a note to Kyle and he'll, he'll be able to help out. Thanks, everybody. Um, there's no more questions. I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everybody online for sticking with us.